I'd like to bring to order the town of Cordera, Madera, special meeting of the town council for Tuesday, June twentieth, twenty twenty-three at six P M. Call to order and roll call.
Councilmember Casissa.
Yeah.
Councilmember Avasio.
Here.
Councilmember Thomas.
Here.
Vice Mayor Beckman.
Here.
Mayor Lee.
Here. Uh, I'd like to open it up to public comment regarding this closed session item. I've seen no one in the room. Is there anyone online or?
We don't have anyone online and we don't have email and public comment for this item.
Okay, so with that, I'll close the public comment and move to the closed session regarding the following items. Public employee performance evaluation and closed session pursuant to government code section five, four, nine, five, seven for the town manager, Adam Wolf. So are we gonna go to his? Or do we want to stay here? Because it says council in closed session.
Yes, but in the sign it says in town manager's office, and then I will put a sign up on for the Zoom attendees.
Okay, cool. Okay. Welcome, everyone. Um, so we're reconvening into open session. Uh, there's nothing to report out uh for this closed session. Um, so I will adjourn the closed session. I'll now bring to order the town of Cordera, Madera, regular town council meeting for Tuesday, June twentieth, twenty twenty-three for a six thirty P M start. It's now six thirty-seven. Can I get a roll call?
Councilmember Casissa, councilmember Avasio.
Here.
Councilmember Thomas.
Here.
Vice Mayor Beckman.
Here.
Mayor Lee.
Here. Uh, can we do a salute to the flag?
I pledge the flag of the United States of America, Republic, the United States, nation under God, in the visible, he has justice.
Okay, so with that, uh, I'll move on to item number two, which is the open time for public comment. Any member of the public may address the town council concerning any item not on the council agenda. Uh, speakers will be limited to three minutes unless otherwise specified. Um, is there anyone in the public that would like to make a three-minute comment to the? Seeing none in in the room. Is there any online or any written comment?
Yes, uh, we have a hand raised from Stephen Kaplan.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. My name is Stephen Kaplan. I live at two hundred Marina Vista Avenue in Larkspur. I wanted to address um the dog walking in Cordera, Madera Park. I appreciate the action of the town council last year, or the allowing dogs on leashes at the park. There are signs throughout the park saying that the ordinance will be strictly enforced. Unfortunately, I don't think that's the case. I'm a regular dog walker. I walk my dog practically every morning between six thirty and seven thirty. And although most uh dog owners do have their dogs on leash and in control, there are typically always one or two dogs unleashed with free thing throughout the park. Um, sometimes those dogs are under control by their owner, but sometimes they're not. I want to uh talk about two specific incidents uh that one I witnessed and one my daughter was involved. Uh, one time I was walking my dog and I was coming in by the skate park into the park and walking towards the school. And in the in the distance, there were three German shepherds off-leash with their owner. And I think anybody who's a dog owner knows that you have three dogs running. It's a pack. Um, if a dog was to approach those three, it would not be a pleasant scene. Um, there would be definitely a problem. So that's one incident. The second, my daughter has two small dogs. She was walking in the park. Her dogs were unleashed. Uh, she came upon a man who had his dog off-leash. She politely asked him to leash his dog, and he uh saw fit to unleash a verbal assault with many F-bombs directly threatening her. Um, it was quite a vicious interaction. He eventually walked away, but it definitely startled my daughter. He only walked away after she stood up and confronted him, calling a bully, et cetera, did he leave? But definitely she was verbally assaulted. I would suggest that you have the Central Marin Police Department do some drive-bys occasionally in the morning and after work hours um to enforce your ordinance. Otherwise, you will have a situation that's pretty predictable where either dogs are severely injured and or owners are going to be severely injured in a confrontation or in trying to break up the dogs. So again, thanks for the ordinance, but please let's enforce it. Thank you very much.
Uh, is there any other comment currently? Yeah, Rebecca, did you want? Is is there any other comment first? And then if so, if not, can staff just address how we enforce ordinances at the park perhaps? And are there any other?
Sorry, we had a technical difficulty.
Okay, so maybe we need a moment.
No additional attendees.
We don't have any additional um hands raised and we don't have email public comment.
Okay, so Adam, do you feel comfortable to talk?
Yeah.
Ordinance enforcement?
Absolutely, and this is this is sort of one of those things that is an ongoing um challenge. We obviously can't be there every um hour of the day that the um dog park or even the park is open. Um, but we do have uh code enforcement officials that we um our town staff and are trained in sort of talking to individuals and have been doing so for the last ever since the ordinance was passed, uh focused on just this issue of actually walking the town park, going into the town park um uh almost on a daily basis, um especially when it becomes summertime and and sort of that's uh when it's more frequently used. And so um they will continue to do that. I will talk to them. It's good public comment, a good reminder to of
Yeah.
where where code enforcement needs to be focused, so we can address that comment.
Fortunately, we can't be everywhere uh uh all the time, right? And and
Yeah.
it's still unfortunate here, but I
And I also think one other point, it just, it's, I think, um, CMPA, you know, we try to do what we can to make sure that they are focused on where they need to be focused on and use our resources to uh address things such as uh dogs off-leash and quality of life issues.
So seeing no other public comment, we'll close the open time for public comment.
Mayor, we do have Rebecca needs to make an announcement.
Okay.
Needs. Oh, thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. I um was trying to raise my head. I should have gone to the podium. Um, thank you. I wanted to talk briefly about uh Citizen of the Year this year for the Fourth of July Parade. We weren't able to have it on tonight's agenda because the selection committee wanted to surprise our our honoree. And uh this year, we uh had a formal process of um convening a Citizen of the Year Committee comprised of representatives of each of our local community service organizations, and the committee met and selected Mark Gold Rosen as its awardee this year. Which is really exciting and a great way to honor someone who's been a longtime resident, a longtime community foundation member, and for I don't know the precise number of yours, but definitely more than a decade has um has done the Summer Sunday Concert Series that Cordera Madera is so well-known for um every Sunday in our um Piccolo Pavilion in Monkey Park. So I wanted to make the public aware of of this since we won't be meeting again before the Fourth of July, but uh I've already extended the invitation for him to appear before council to receive a um a resolution of recognition and a plaque uh bestowed by the the council at the July eighteenth Town Council Meeting. And we'll also be making the announcement at this Sunday's concert series in front of his home crowd there, and we'll be able to celebrate him there. And stop by the Fourth of July Parade, and he will be riding along in the parade. So um I think that's about that that concludes my my announcement, but I just wanted to make sure that it got out there in the public. Because it's it's a special award that we haven't had for a number of years due to COVID, and um we're so pleased to be bringing it back this year. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for that. Uh, so moving on to item number three, which is presentations. Uh, we have none, so we'll move to item number four, which is the consent calendar. The purpose of the consent calendar is to group items together which are routine or have been discussed previously and do not require further discussion. They will be approved by a single motion. Any member of the town council, town staff, or the public may request to remove an item for discussion. Um, is there anyone on town council that would like to remove an item? Anyone from staff? Anyone from the public? Seeing none, can I get a? Yes.
Uh, I I don't know if this is premature, but I was just going to pull. What is the item number? Item four B, the Resolution thirty-one, twenty twenty-three approving the requirements and expectations for serving on a Cordera advisory body or committee. Um, I did receive a request to correct some typographical errors. Um, I I don't know if anyone else had any comments they wanted to make on it, but I just wanted to make it known that uh we were going to be changing city, where where it referred to city of Cordera Madera, we'll change it to town. Um, but I wanted to give any other council members a chance to make any comments, but just at least let you know that we'll be correcting some typographical errors.
Yeah, um. May I also ask that you discuss a little? Would you like to discuss four F about the um Allison? To inform the council?
Actually, that that's that's a great idea. Thank you, Mayor Lee. Um, for four F, the request to appoint a board and commission members. One of the the items is not an incumbent, so I think it's worth noting that after a number of years of not having a representative to represent the town of Cordera, Madera on the Marin Sonoma Mosquito and Vector Control District Board, we received uh an application from Allison Marquess, um a Cordera, Madera resident who um has a biotech background and an interest in um this subject area, and Mayor Lee and I um met with her on a Zoom meeting this afternoon along with the director of of the Control District Board and one of their longtime-serving Board of Trustees, and talked to her a bit about her interest and um the work of the board, which um was interesting to learn about, and we are are comfortable appointing her to this position, and we're really looking forward to partnering with her to get more information out to our residents about the work of of the board and what they can do for our residents for for vector control and mosquito abatement in our jurisdiction.
Yeah, and I just wanted to add to the council because I did attend it. There were a few things we've asked them to come and actually give a presentation to the council. I thought some of the information that I had learned from it, not actively seeing anyone participate on it for years was quite informative to the benefit of the community. So I look forward to having them share with us all the things that they really do, because the mosquito, I think, is misleading. The vector part is amazing, right? Like, it's so much more robust, what they're really doing across the board to deal with uh pest and vermin and health issues. And the ways that they have to approach it in environmentally sensitive areas. Um, they also have uh flatboats like they have in swamps. Uh, they have three of them, and you can do ride-alongs if you're interested in um seeing how they perform their duties in some of the more exotic locales around. So um if anyone on the council is interested in that, I'm sure that they could accommodate it.
We also learned that they are the oldest um Vector Control District in the state. It's also worth pointing out that uh this particular appointment can be either a two- or a four-year term, but it's recommended for for new appointees be appointed to two-year terms, so that's why uh staff recommended that in this case.
Okay, so that we can put four F back into the uh bucket and uh and four B, and I'd be looking for a motion if there's no other.
I'll move items four A through four G.
I'll second.
Councilmember Casissa.
Yes.
Councilmember Avasio.
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beckman.
Yes.
Mayor Lee.
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries.
So that closes the consent calendar, so we'll move on to public hearings. Uh, item number five A is the review and possible adoption of Resolution number thirty-three uh twenty twenty-three approving the town operating budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Lee and councilmembers. Um, this is the second of the two-meeting item after our discussion on June sixth um related to the introduction of the town's uh operating budget for uh and capital capital projects budget for fiscal year twenty-three uh twenty-four. I want to thank uh the council members for their uh thoughtful comments at the last meeting and um for the discussion that we had um at the June sixth meeting, which uh resulted in in uh staff making one modification to the town's uh proposed capital um project funding um uh budget for twenty-three, twenty-four. Uh, and and what we have done is, as indicated in the staff report, is increased the essentially the amount of uh monies that were are are going to be available for park uh improvements and addressing some deficiencies, recognizing that we are coming forth hopefully with the conclusion of the Park Master Plan in the first half of this fiscal year, and hopefully can get started with addressing some of those projects in this fiscal year. So we upped that amount uh from two hundred thousand dollars to four hundred thousand dollars again in the twenty-three, twenty-four um capital projects funding budget, uh capital projects budget. Um, and really that um is going to uh be accounted for by reducing um uh some of the monies that were allocated in the budget that was presented on June sixth. Um, reducing some of the the monies from the sidewalk program decreased by about two hundred thousand dollars. Uh, there was the Endeavor Slide Repair um decreased by two hundred thousand dollars, and 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 RJ Suker, Director of Public Works, went through this at the last meeting. Um, some other uh reductions in the capital expenditures there. And then um adding back in this additional two hundred thousand dollars, which we will um also um account for in terms of the uh mid-year budget revisions when we go over the unallocated funds that will be left over from uh the twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year. In addition, and this was brought up at the last meeting, we are adding in um two hundred thousand dollars into the capital um uh improvement budget for the Marina Village Birm Flood Control uh project, which we hope to after doing some outreach and um uh we hope to start the process really in this next fiscal year of of how to actually um uh go about a a strategy and and uh a preferred sort of direction on addressing some of the the levees out Marina Village, which is a critical adaptation measure that was has been discussed in climate adaptation assessment and also actually in our safety element update, which we'll talk about later. So with that, um, that's um I think there was um uh also some questions we were going to follow up with. Um, I know councilmember Casissa had a question about O-OPEB funding and where we were with respect to sort of other cities in terms of our funding. We had noted that we're about fifty-nine percent funded on OPEB. Um, and uh that is sort of lags behind. We'll get updated numbers in a couple months for for twenty-three um twenty-two, twenty-three. But in general, that is right around. It's it's actually a wide variety compared when you compare to other cities where they are in the spectrum of how much funding they pre-funding they've done of their other post- post-employee retirement benefits um were at least, you know, relatively equal, if not ahead of where most other cities are that we polled, which many in Marin, we went up to Sonoma, and I think we caught some in the peninsula as well when we did that without getting into specifics on other cities, but just wanted to get back to uh councilmember Casissa on that. And with that, I'll open up to the council for any questions.
Any questions?
Thanks. I just have some clarification questions, kind of like the rollover from last meeting.
Yeah.
Um, that we didn't, I didn't get a chance to ask you. Um, and we're just specific again for clarification. There's nine, five thousand in there for seniors. Can you just give us what that is? What it's for?
Uh, absolutely. So um the senior programs, part of it is um salaries for, and it's a small portion, but I think it was ten to twelve thousand salaries uh for park and rec staff to um staff some of the senior programming that happens at the park uh Community Center. Uh, and uh addition, there was some of the monies are allocated for um the aquatics program that the the council uh is familiar with and was approved for funding this year. Um, and uh the rest of it uh is those those are the main components of it for for now, and so we budgeted a little bit more. There are some additional monies that could be used should other uh needs arise during the course of the year to address some senior programs as well. So we just cushioned it a little little last year. Um, this or this year, twenty-two, twenty-three, the current fiscal year, estimated actuals are about forty-six thousand, so we we did increase that a little bit just to account for things that may make them up.
Okay, thanks. And then there's three hundred thousand for disaster preparedness.
Yep.
Same type thing. And then a dovetail question. Is there any money in there for NRG support within Cordera, Madera?
Yeah, so so most of that funding is is uh allocated in case uh there are some specific uh uh wild, I should vegetation management projects or tree removal projects that are fire department or Central Marin Fire may need to to address that are outside of their own budgetary um or or the outside of their own budget and aren't really related to the um Larkspur and Cordera Madera as a whole in terms of how they address those um those needs equally between Cordera and Larkspur. So um I will say that wasn't, there wasn't a lot of expenditure on that last year in talking to uh Ruben and Daria. Uh, but again, should needs arise, they have budget available to address Cordera Madera specific needs. Um, in addition, uh there are some funds specifically for vegetation management, about fifty thousand dollars. Uh, and then the NRG CERT money is actually funded through the fire department budget itself, and so there is um about twelve thousand dollars in that uh for supplies. Um, and that also go to staffing, um Rachel Benz, um bells, I think there's um the NRG coordinator. Oh, I'm I'm sorry about that.
That's okay.
Rachel Kurtz, yes, she is also a portion of that um is funded through the uh Central Marin Fire Authority's uh budget as well. So it's not specifically in here, but it is through um the Central Marin Fire Authorities budget.
Okay, thanks. And just a couple more. Um, if I read correctly, park and rec is this for the next fiscal year around about a hundred seventy thousand dollar deficit?
Uh, that's that's correct. It's essentially um yeah, the director salary and uh is is going to be funded from the town's general fund.
Okay. And then last one is um sending on park and rec. If I read it correctly, under there's facility section under there, it just shows revenue expenses. That shows a loss of seventy thousand.
Yeah.
Correctly.
Yeah, and talking to Daria about some of the parks, um the way that it's broken out this this year, which is a little different than it's been broken out in years past, is they were trying to um essentially account for program areas separately. And so you'll notice, I think, on that one, there was zero budget or zero dollars in the last couple of years. Um, but that's correct. Um, as far as the facility rentals, I don't know exactly um off how how it was broken out in terms of exact facilities and that deficit, but there was a essentially a deficit from a revenue versus the uh staffing that. And again, we assigned certain staff members under that heading or facility rentals uh that could have been, as I said, they do multiple different um tasks other than just facility rental. So part of it may be attributed to just accounting for that particular staff salaries or those particular staff salaries under facility rentals when they're actually doing other things. And so you'll see the budget under other program areas sort of covers that staff person as well to a certain extent.
All right, thanks.
Under uh park improvement, um the um budget, it went budgeted from two hundred thousand to four hundred thousand, and I can't remember did we talk about specifically why what we wanted to use the extra for? Or just sort of just having it?
I think it's in some ways, it's um it is one of the placeholder. On improvement part specifically, but you know, we know that's worked its way through the month. There are also certain
My mic went off about, sorry about that. Um, I think there are things that um we've already started to identify that could use some improvements or or just uh fixing some of the walkways, um you know, and paths around some of the town park facilities. Um, but as far as putting the extra money in there, I think there are probably going to be some things that we can put some money to that are sort of the high priority, quick things that we can actually do, but we want to um allow that process really to play out before we make decisions on exactly what that money goes towards.
Thank you.
Just one quick question, if I may. So the the salaries um as we saw are up uh seventeen percent, which looks steep, but I understand that that is in large part because we've had vacancies or you, for example, you've been wearing two hats. Um, so is it is it fair to say that uh this seventeen percent jump is something of a correction? I think that's, I think that's fair to say. Um, it, yeah, I would just leave it at that. I mean, it's there are, um, I I explained it at last last time as well. Um, most of that is attributed to what you said, the some of the vacancies, and so you're seeing a bigger jump jump than would otherwise have been between last year and this year. But there are some normal increases that you're seeing as well in terms of the um uh step increases, one new position, um the cola increases, and then as well as I talked about last time, uh more significant um salaries are being uh in that line item from sanitary district personnel, which comes back to the town Got it. in the form of revenue. Okay, thank you.
I don't have any questions. So with that, I'll close council questioning and open it up to the public. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak on this? Anyone online?
We do not have any hands raised or email public comment for this item.
Okay, so with that, I'll close public comment and bring it back for any final consideration. We are looking uh to adopt the resolution as requested.
I just wanted to say, if I may, um, that I was not at the last meeting where this was uh first considered, so I just wanted to let the my colleagues in the public know that I was able to watch the discussion at the last meeting and have been able to review uh the budget thoroughly, and I'm really impressed that you guys have put together a very robust, uh a strong, balanced budget. So thank you. Um, and I'm happy to move adoption of uh the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget for the town of Cordera, Madera.
If I can second half, I can just throw in a quick comment.
Yeah, before we go through, I think, oh, sorry, we have any comments over here as well?
I just one comment. Um, I just want to thank staff. I think at the last meeting, I brought up about bumping up the park and rec um another hundred. I think you were two hundred thousand. I should have bumped it up a hundred, another hundred, but you bumped it up too. So I appreciate that. One thing I would just suggest going forward is um maybe for next year or the upcoming year, if you, I'll let you guys figure out, is to do a little bit of strategic planning, like maybe try to go out like three years or so, because you kind of certain factors you're going to know, like salary increases, some of you may not know, but I think if you did modeling around that, it's going to help, because again, I know it's last meeting I brought this up. There's some trends that are trending negative. Um, I just don't want anything to get out of control. So it's just food for thought.
Mayor, if I may, just real quickly, it's not unrelated, but I did want to also mention that um based on the comments we had last time that uh Stacy did update the project budget book online to, we don't know if we need to show it now, but it's does have the more contrast um uh and the tables have been enlarged as well. So when we publish that, it will be uh much more readable for the public.
Okay, thank you for that. Um, so with that, I'll close the comment, and I heard a second. So can we get a?
Councilmember Casissa.
Yes.
Councilmember Avasio.
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beckman.
Yes.
And Mayor Lee.
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries.
All right. Moving on to item five B, this is the consideration. Right. Moving on to item five B, this is the consideration impossible action to adopt resolution number thirty four. Twenty twenty three repealing the twenty fifteen, twenty two, three Corder Madera housing element, adopting the twenty twenty three, twenty thirty one Corder Madera housing element. Is there a report?
Yes, we, we, we are happy to be able to give you this report this evening. This is really a exciting moment. I know. Personally, for all the staff that are here tonight, I do really wanna. Not only is it happy, but I think this is a moment of a lot of pride here for our staff. And should be as well for our community members who participated in this process and made it what it is today in the housing element that you see in front of you. I just want to start by recognizing some of our team members. Really. You know, starting with Martha Battaglia, who none of this would have really been possible without her. Constant attention and thoroughness and stick to itiveness and project management really of. All encompassing project management of this really. Challenging and tough project. I also want to acknowledge Christine O'Rourke of O'Rourke Associate and Associates. Our consultant who. Packaged and worked in more than that advised us and really took all of the comments that we had, that others had. Throughout the process that the state had and helped to revise our document into something that. We are very happy to announce is received basically the, the HCD's. Letter of substantial compliance, which is, which is big news. I'll let others take, take credit for that. And then as well, Dave Javid, who is farther over to my right and his team, Rachel Sharkland, who were part of our. Consultant team doing public outreach, which I think laid the groundwork for a lot of the success that we saw over. The course of the last two years. And so. Huge kudos to, to Dave and, and the work that was done there. Also want to recognize EMC planning for their. Their work on the environmental document. And so I, I think we all are. What I, what I think is interesting is, yes, we can have a lot of pride in the product that we created. And the process that was followed to get to this point. I've also have a lot of pride of sort of the working relationships that we built through this process and. The really the collaborative. Effort that this was amongst the various different team members. And I think. We all come out of, come out of it with a really positive. Feeling about the work that we've done. And so it's really a great honor to be here to. Now sit in front of you with this item where the council can. Hopefully. Move this into the implementation phase, which is really the next phase of this entire effort on housing. It doesn't really stop here. It just continues on to a new phase. And so with that being said. Yes, tonight, there are two items before you. We are. Requesting that the town council adopt the resolution. Adopting the twenty twenty three, twenty thirty one Corder Madera housing element. We also have a resolution in front of you confirming that the town councils findings and conclusions regarding the final. Subsequent environmental impact report. And the certification in town council resolution O two, twenty twenty three, which was the rezonings that the council saw in January. Apply to the proposed safety element update. And adopting the update to the safety element as well, including changes to chapter seven and eight of the two thousand nine Corder Madera general plan. So what's. A little bit different here tonight as well is that we also have an update to our safety element in front of you. And so we'll talk a little bit about that. I'm gonna just give a little bit of context, then hand it over to Martha. And we have a little nice surprise, I think, at the end to show you, which hopefully is a. A, a nice way to finish our presentation. So if we go to the next slide, just wanna. Sure. Good action. That's okay. That's okay. Explain a lot. Next, we can skip ahead. We're gonna try to, I know we got a lot to get to tonight, so I'm not gonna. A whole lot of times heading the context. So yes, it's been a two-year process. We've been through a lot of meetings. We're at the end. And so that's what this is really showing. And. Next slide, the last time we showed this to you. You know, obviously a big part of the housing element, which we focused a lot on was identifying the sites where we're going to. Facilitate the required number of housing units that a state has provided and said that we need to plan for. And so a big part of our effort was to. Identify those sites. You, I'm not gonna go over them again here today. Happy to answer questions about them. But we've done that heavy lifting, which a lot of frankly, other cities in when they're going, you're gonna see they're gonna adopt their housing elements. They're gonna adopt them with. Program implementation programs to do rezonings in the next couple of years. So Corder Madera has done that heavy lifting in terms of changing our ordinances, changing our general plan to accommodate for. Our regional housing needs allocation. And so that's the ten sites that are the majority of how we're meeting are seven hundred and twenty five units that we need to plan for. At all the different income levels. There are other strategies that we've talked about in the past as well. Including units constructed through ADUs. S B nine projects, et cetera, et cetera. Next slide. And so. As required by state law, the planning commission, we brought this to the planning commission. Or its advisory vote on the changes to the. General plan to update the general plan with the new housing element for twenty twenty three, twenty. Twenty, twenty thirty one. And also as well, the, the safety element. And so. As, as part of that, the planning commission voted four to nothing. And adopted resolution number twenty three, oh, one, two, recommending that the town council. Approve both resolutions that you see before you this evening. We did revise based on some of the comments, the safety element to accommodate or include some of their comments on the safety element. And with that. I'm gonna turn it over to Martha to give a little bit of. A, a presentation for. House and element itself. Thank you.
Good evening, honorable mayor, members of the council. Excited to be here this evening at this milestone. So the housing element is one of seven mandated elements of the general plan. And unlike the other elements, it is required to be certified by the state. And it is also required to be updated every eight years. And the update to the housing element, it's an opportunity for all communities in the state to have a thoughtful dialogue with their. Citizens about housing, housing needs and where it's appropriate to, to locate housing. So the housing element consists of five chapters shown on this slide. And really probably the, the chapter that gets the most attention is the housing sites, which is chapter three. And it's in this chapter where jurisdiction needs to identify the location of available sites for housing development or redevelopment. And table eleven of the, of chapter three shows that over the next eight years, the town can accommodate one thousand and eleven housing unit, units. And as Adam mentioned, the majority of those are for anticipated developments on the ten housing opportunity sites. It also includes accessory dwelling units and single family homes on undeveloped parcels in addition to single family homes constructed. Using the provisions of Senate Bill nine to split lots and to do additional housing. Another important chapter is chapter five, which is the policies and programs. And this chapter identifies goals and policies and programs based on housing needs of the community. Community interest and also state law. Many of the existing policies and programs in the current housing element have been carried forward, forward into the update. There, the housing element also includes three appendices. Appendix A is the. Public outreach. Appendix B is an evaluation of the programs from the last housing element. An appendix C is affirmatively furthering fair housing. And those were new requirements as part of this housing element update cycle. And Veronica Tam, Tam and Associates worked on appendix C with input from staff and also Christina O'Rourke. And we did receive a grant funding for, for that. Now this slide shows kind of how the goals and policies and programs kind of are incorporated into chapter five. So at the hierarchy is a goal and then below a goal is a policy and then there are implementation programs under the various policies. And each implementation program includes information on who is responsible for implementing that program. How it will be financed, what the objective is, and also the time, timeframe to complete it. In this housing element cycle, there was quite a few comments from HCD that the objectives needed to be more concrete. And they didn't want to see language like explore or evaluate, but they were really looking for jurisdictions to make a firm commitment to achieve something. So our housing element includes a total of fifty six implementation programs. And over the course of the next eight years, the town will be working to implement these different programs. And the implementation programs will be incorporated into the house, the work plan. Over the course of the next eight years, which is something that the, the town council evaluates on an annual basis. So there is quite a bit of work still left to do. An important component of the project was public outreach. All part, as part of the update, local governments are required to implement. A robust community engagement program that includes reaching out to all individuals and families, including underrepresented groups. So staff worked closely with plan to place, as Adam mentioned, on developing a multi-pronged approach. And one of the primary goals was to connect with as many people in the community as possible. So the outreach, outreach began in September twenty twenty one with the development of a dedicated webpage. We use this webpage to post all information housing related, all of the past workshop recordings and presentations. Are on this webpage and we think it will continue to be a resource to the community in the future. We also mailed a mailer to every business and resident at the onset of the project announcing a six-part workshop series. And the workshop series was really designed to be a conversation with the community about housing. And they were held six months, beginning in October twenty twenty one through March twenty twenty two. And they were held the, the same, I think, believe it was the third Wednesday of the month. So we tried to establish. A rhythm with the community of individuals coming to participate in the workshops and each workshop sort of built upon, upon the previous workshop. We also held a variety of interactive pop-up events and we found that these were a great tool. With communicating with members of the public that were maybe less likely to attend a more traditional workshop. So these pop-up events were held on weekends, in the days, on evenings. And at a variety of different community events. And I, I know. Don't speak for Adam, but I know I really enjoyed the pop-up event. So it was a great way to. To interact with the community in a kind of a more casual setting and to have conversations about housing. A next slide. And this just shows some of the, the pop-up events that we did over the, 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 the past year. And as I mentioned, they were held at different times on some on weekends, some on weeknights as a way to try to engage with as many people as possible. Next slide. And this shows the outreach by the numbers. We anticipate that we engaged with just over forty two hundred people throughout the process. A lot of that was visitors to the webpage. And the estimates for the, the workshop series and the pop-up events uses staff's best estimate. It's hard to. Know exactly how many people attended the workshop series since there were six of them and many people attended multiple workshops. Next slide. So we have made several revisions to the draft housing element to address comments by HCD. And as I previously noted, we are required, HCD is required to certify the town's housing element. This shows the different drafts that were prepared by the town. The teal dots show when each housing element draft was posted to the website and made available to the public. The tan dot shows when a draft was submitted to HCD for their formal review. And the darker brown color shows when the town received comments back from HCD. So the first draft was posted to the town's website on July eighth. And as required by state law, this was a thirty day public review period for the first draft. And during this thirty day period, we held, I believe, three pop-up events. And we also announced the release of the draft through a postcard that was mailed to all residences. And in August, there was a meeting at the town council where we went over the different comments that we were, had received on the draft. And made some revisions to the draft before sending it to HCD. So as Adam mentioned, we did receive our letter of substantial compliance from HCD this past Friday. That letter has been provided to the council and also posted on, on the website as well. So following the adoption of the housing element, staff will submit the draft. Housing element to the state. And I would like to point out that several minor typographical. Corrections have been made to the, the draft housing element. Kind of through the review with HCD, you know, tables were added and there were little changes here and there. So. We made some kind of minor corrections to correct some of those, those inconsistencies. So the draft that we sent to HCD will include all of those revisions, which was the draft that was posted this afternoon. Also before you this evening is an update to the safety element. And recent changes to state law require that each time a housing element is updated, the safety element is also updated as well. And the safety element must address new wildfire, new evacuation routes, and then also climate adaptation and resilience requirements. Much of the new information to the update to the safety element. Comes directly from the town's climate adaptation assessment, which was completed in twenty twenty one. And the changes to the safety element are intended to comply with the recently adopted state law requirements. For integrating information and programs related to new wildfire evacuation routes, climate adaptation and resilience. Planning staff worked with RJ Suko, the public works director, and also Ruben Mart, Martin. The fire chief on the update to these, to the safety element. A next slide. And staff did not take a comprehensive. Update to chapter seven and eight. Much of the existing text was carried over into the safety element update. A new text to these chapters is shown in underline and any deletions are shown in strike through. But much of the existing text is, has been retained. And the revisions to the safety element include the addition of a new section on sea level rise. And adaptation in chapter seven. And this section describes the effects of climate change, adaptation planning occurring in the county and in Corder Madera. A discussion of sea level rise projections and on adaption pathways. And in addition, several new goals and policies and programs related to sea level rise and adaption was added to chapter seven of the general plan. And the proposed amendments to chapter eight include new texts on hazard mitigation. And additional information was also proposed on evacuation routes. And several new policies and programs in chapter eight have also been amended as well.
Just real quickly on that, I do think this is an important step in sort of furthering our adaptation efforts, formally getting some of these. Some of the information and some of the potential strategies. Into what is the town's general plan. As you know, there were some challenges with that during the climate adaptation assessment process. But this sort of takes some of that information and builds that into the town's general. Plan with this update and gives direction about how the town should start to think about and. What to think about and, and, and the various different strategies that we should pursue to start to think about adaptation, especially sea level rise.
Next slide. And staff submitted a copy of the, the draft safety element to the. California Geological Survey of Department and Conservation. This was a relatively new requirement that. Jurisdictions submit their draft safety elements to this agency. We did receive some comments back and as a result, we made some. We did receive some comments back and as a result, we made some changes to chapters. Chapter eight related to a tsunami. So there was a new section was added on tsunami hazards. Also, a new figure was included related to tsunami areas and some minor edits were made to two of the policies. And at the the planning commission meeting on May twenty third, the planning commission did include in their motion, a direction to staff to make these changes in the draft safety element that is was forwarded to the town council. So the the version that you have before you this evening includes these modifications. Next slide. The California Environmental Quality Act and SEQA guidelines require that certain projects be reviewed for environmental impacts and that environmental documents be prepared to analyze within. The town determined that the twenty twenty three, twenty thirty one housing element update and the updates to the land use element and safety element and associated zoning ordinance amendments could have an impact on the environment. And such a subsequent environmental impact report was prepared. And this document is subsequent to the two thousand and nine general plan EIR. Town council certified the subsequent EIR that was prepared for the project on January eleventh, twenty twenty three, and the town council took certified the EIR prior to taking any other action on the project. The town has revised the draft housing element to address comments by HCD. And we've also revised the draft safety element to address the comments received by the California Geological Survey. And none of these revisions require additional SEQA review because they do not result in any impacts that have not already been analyzed. Quickly go over some of the incentives to having a compliant housing element and some of the consequences for not having a compliant housing element. If a jurisdiction does not have a compliant housing element, then HCD may refer the jurisdiction to the Attorney General. And this obviously would have quite a bit of costs associated with legal suits and attorney fees. And in addition, a jurisdiction could lose the ability to have permit over some permitting authority. And for incentives, their jurisdictions with a compliant housing element are eligible. Or in some cases, receive higher priority for various sources of funding. And next slide. And HCD has also created a new program, the pro housing designation. And this was created, I believe, in in twenty twenty two. And the it's designed to provide additional incentives for jurisdictions to remove barriers and create housing. The incentives include points or preferences in scoring for competitive grants. And it's my understanding that in Marin County, the city of Larkspur has submitted an application to be pro housing designation and several other cities are planned to in the coming, coming months and years. And to qualify, a jurisdiction is required to earn thirty points over four different categories. And within each category, a jurisdiction must select a minimum of one of the options. So it kind of works like a menu where you choose different options and the end of it, you need to obtain at least thirty points. And each action has a certain number of points associated with it. So at this point, staff has not done a thorough analysis of the pro housing designation, but we wanted to make the council aware of this. And if there is interest, we could do some additional research and return to a subsequent meeting. Next slide. The staff recommends that the town council take two actions. The first is to adopt a resolution number thirty four, twenty twenty three, repealing the twenty fifteen, twenty twenty three Corte Madera Housing Element and adopting the twenty twenty three, twenty thirty one Corte Madera Housing Element. And the second is to adopt resolution number thirty five, twenty twenty three, adopting the update to the safety element, including changes to chapter seven and eight. And confirming that the town council's findings and conclusions regarding the final SCIR and certification in the town council resolution oh two, two, zero, two, three, apply to the proposed safety element update. And I would also like to add that a minor change was made to resolution number thirty four, twenty twenty three. We added a new recital to that resolution stating when we received our compliance letter from HCD.
Ready to, all right. So this is sort of our capstone to this entire process, which we want to unveil tonight, which is a little bit of a video for all of you to just, just to sort of I don't know, it was, it was just an idea that we thought would have a nice be a nice way to sort of end this process, but also a way to have something that lives on and be accessible and sort of mark this moment in time for our community and and sort of summarize the the conversations that we've had throughout this process. And really, it's a credit, I think, what we found in in doing our outreach, that some of the most effective outreach was not you know, staff can help facilitate the conversations, but it's really hearing from other members of the Corte Madera community and seeing, you know, hearing what their perspectives are, what their stories are. During the workshops, we heard from landowners, local landowners who own property, put a face to some of our local property owners. We heard from, you'll see again, you know, school districts, superintendents understand sort of the wide perspectives or or the wide array of perspectives on housing issues in Corte Madera. And so we wanted to really bring those voices forward again and recognize the people who participated in this process and give them a voice to sort of live on in this video. And again, I also do think it's important that it it just marks the conversation in this point in time in our history, really, that we can look back to and see how, where things were and how things were and what progress maybe we've made in the coming years. So with that, oh, you know, I I I think you'll see that it also sort of, we focused a lot on state requirements and regulations and the numbers and this and that. And yes, we have to do that as well, but I think taking maybe the best of this process and trying to draw that out is what we try to do and really focus on, you know what, we really should have a conversation about housing in Corte Madera affordability issues. How are we going to make this a more livable place for the next generation of Corte Maderans? And 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 this speaks to that as well, rather than sort of getting, I mean, we we have thousands of pages, so we can get into detail on what the state requires and all the programs policies, but I think this tries to summarize that. So with that, I don't know how we we go next. So it's a fingers crossed and hopefully, you know, it's it's a little bit of, it's about ten minutes, so just.
So I lived here for twelve years. We moved in when I was pregnant with my first child and I feel really fortunate to live here. It's a wonderful community and a wonderful place to raise a family.
When my husband and I moved to Corte Madera fifty nine years ago with our two very small children, families could actually buy a home in Corte Madera for twenty five thousand dollars. Today, it's nearly impossible to buy any home in Corte Madera of any kind for less than a million dollars.
For me, concerns with housing are finding affordable housing. I'm a teacher, a yoga instructor. And finding something that is a beautiful aesthetic place to live that I can afford on the income that I make.
I am the superintendent of Larkspur Corte Madera School District. I've been the superintendent here now for six years. So when I take a look at Larkspur Corte Madera School District as an organization, when we're hiring employees, especially from out of the area, employees who are looking to either purchase a home or rent a home or apartment, it is very, very challenging.
Teacher salaries are far less than the average income in Corte Madera. And the same thing is true for this, the incomes of many longtime residents of Corte Madera who exist on what HUD categorizes as very low incomes.
Housing is really too expensive for middle and lower income people, most middle income people. And and lower income people probably can't get a tow in.
You know, back in the day, you could, you could live in these places, but now you really can't unless you it seems to me, unless you somehow, some way, whether you're a high-tech person making a lot of money or you're, you've, you're enjoying generational wealth, so you're getting help. It just seems almost out of reach to me, quite frankly.
I think like probably everybody else who lives in the Bay Area, who at least cares about other people, the affordability situation is so out of hand. It's it's tragic that younger people can't afford to live here.
Even if you have a very good job, you still can't afford to buy a house. Like you really have to, like, sort of be quite fortunate in terms of the access to to the money in Corte Madera. So that's a big challenge. And then for us is, yeah, it's just like, we'd like to have more young people, more families, but they just can't. And lots of them will somewhere else.
Now our big concern, having three teenage kids, will our kids be able to afford to stay here near us as they get out of college and start their families and things? So it it's been the same thing my whole childhood and in our adulthood and now our kids' lives, where it's such a limited supply and such an outrageous cost.
So we have a supplying and the management, right? There's a mismatch. And I think now particularly in Marin County, we have a very strong anti-development sentiment. They have made that problem even worse, right? Because we are not able to build anything in Marin County. Even though eighty five percent of the land is already protected. And the other fifteen percent almost fully developed. And I think that that status quo is not going to work anymore.
I personally did not grow up in a community as nice as this and I sometimes think about how you know, if my parents had wanted to buy the house that I live in, they might, may not have been allowed to because my father was black. And there was, there was still a restrictive covenant in the deed to my house. You know, I think Marin has come a long way and I love Corte Madera and I love Marin, but I do think we have a responsibility to be mindful of how historical practices have restricted who can live here. And to bring that historical context to conversations about new housing. Because I hope that it will help us keep like a generosity of spirit. When we think about welcoming new people to our town and maybe especially people who haven't had as much of an opportunity to live here.
The way the town reached out to the community, I thought was just outstanding. I I think you couldn't miss the fact that this was going on. And if you were the slightest bit interested, you had an opportunity to express yourself and people did. And I hope that they got as much input as they needed because they really put it out there.
It was clear to me that we really need to do an extra effort to bring that diverse voices to the town. And also to represent these voices, they usually cannot participate in the traditional planning actions. Perhaps that is the area that we need to improve, community engagement and participation for low-income residents, particularly tenants.
I certainly think we need to find some creative ways to add some somewhat affordable houses into the area. To keep it not just an overly exclusive neighborhood. It didn't have that same feeling when I was a kid back in the eighties. But it certainly has kind of more of a feeling now that it's really for the haves, not for the have-nots, which is not really fair. Again, it's a special, beautiful place to live. And not everybody, you know, will ever be able to afford to live here. But it would be nice if we had more availability for the people that 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 we need so desperately in our community that just can't afford to live here in the current state of the market.
People think we're already built out, but not if you consider the underutilized, underzoned properties. So there definitely is opportunity to build. And we should be building more workforce housing.
And what I'm thinking about workforce housing, yeah, it is for the law enforcement, for teachers or or healthcare, healthcare professionals. But also for the families who are supporting the families, right? The families that are taking care of your children. The family, they are maintaining your your gardens or your house landscape. The people, they are cleaning your homes. They are part of your community and they need also a stable housing. We need to respond to the needs of the people that are being affected the most on this when supplying the money is now working. And that is low-income tenants.
We, three years ago, have converted our garage, which was freestanding, into an ADU. We're great supporters of ADUs. We have a wonderful tenant and we did a lot of research before our tenant came in because we wanted to make sure that the rent was affordable to a single person on a limited salary. And we just signed a new lease today and the rent is the same as it was when we first started renting it. So we, we are committed, we believe, to affordable housing.
My concern is the bigger problem of homelessness in the Bay Area. Then my question is, how can Corte Madera do their part in helping to facilitate a problem that we don't necessarily see, but still does exist? We can provide alternative housing for those that need it the most.
My past housing situation, I was homeless, living in Santa Fe at the Marsh, behind the Target in Home Depot for about five years. So coming here to getting housing here in Corte Madera, it's a, it's a big difference because it's because it's so quiet here. It's peaceful to where you can relax and do the things you need to do really.
I'm out of the elements now. Just a lot of it, you know, it's pretty hard to disembark in the elements, especially when you get older. This didn't save my life during this, you know, year.
I'm happy here, calm, a little relationship. They just are always asking if I need anything or, you know, is everything okay? So it, it works, it works well for me here. I like Corte Madera.
You know, on a bigger issue, I just think our community really benefits from having people live here who come from lots of different experiences and perspectives. I think it's so valuable in life to be exposed to people who might be a little different than you are. And so I really welcome the ability to experience that by having new people move into Corte Madera. You know, obviously, I think it enriches anyone's experience to live here because it's such a wonderful place to live. But it also enriches the experiences of people already here. Because that sort of richness and diversity of life experience is educational for all of us. And I know, especially for my kids, I really want them to see the world in all of its different colors and shapes and sizes and experiences.
And I just want to thank both Dave Javid and Rachel Charcland, who conducted the Rachel conducted a lot of the interviews, Martha, as well as key to that video. And then also a friend, a good friend of mine, Clarence Ting, who helped sort of put it all together at the end. So thank you. And we'll leave you with that. Okay, so can open it up to questions?
I just have one quick question. Is there any town or city in either Marin or state of California that's gotten to this point, including rezoning?
Well, I don't think anyone's made a video. So in Marin County, there are three cities that have received their compliance letter, the county, Sausalito and then Corte Madera. Marin County also has completed the rezonings as well. And then within the this, the greater Bay Area, there's a hundred and nine jurisdictions within the ABAG region. And approximately thirty have received their compliance letters from the state. And I don't know how many have completed rezonings.
Yeah, the county, I I think the county still has to go before their board to actually adopt the the housing element, just I was just saying, just saying there. And Sausalito has some reason, Sausalito has rezonings to do as well, so.
Oh, me? Okay. Just one real quick question that I've been asked a couple of times and haven't really been able to answer. So the the Rena said we needed seven hundred something and we're offering up a thousand. Could you explain why we're we're overshooting the mark by so much?
So there's a a provision known as no net loss, which requires jurisdictions to meet the the RENA at all income levels throughout the entirety of the the planning cycle. So if in event, one of our sites came in at a lower density than what we're anticipating, if we had just had seven hundred and twenty-five units, then we would have to rezone another site to make up for that shortfall. So by having a buffer, we are hopefully ensuring that we don't need to do rezonings midway through the cycle because some of our sites have developed at a lower, lower density.
Thank you. Well, well answered. I don't know that I could repeat that, but I'll try.
Another question, a little bit related to the overage. So with the pro-housing designation, one of the categories, one of the things you can get extra points for is being one hundred and fifty percent over your RENA. So if there was a situation where the no net loss is covered by that overage, and can you still use it toward the one hundred and fifty percent over? Do you get to kind of use it twice?
Yeah, I think when, you know, at this point, we would look at what our arena is and we haven't had any projects come in. So the no net loss hasn't really come into play.
Right.
But I think we're slightly under the
The one fifty.
Yeah. So we couldn't use those those points.
Okay. Thank you.
If the council is interested in the pro-housing designation, would would we be doing anything tonight or is, how would we discuss that?
I think just providing some direction that you're interested in in learning more about pro-housing and we could, you know, do a thorough dive and come back to a future council meeting.
Is there any other questions? Okay, so with
Just checking the list.
Okay. So I'll open it up to public comment. Is there anyone in the room that would like to make a comment on this? Ting, not in the room, is there anyone online?
Yes, we have three people with their hands raised and I'll start with Patty Stolier.
Thank you. I was one of the community participants helping with the putting together the housing element and it was a great privilege actually to have our voices heard. And I also wanted to say that when I would talk to members of other age-friendly groups throughout Marin, I didn't get the sense that there was that much participation by the members of the community. And when I see you give a number of over forty-two hundred, that may be every adult in Cordera. So I'm really, really impressed, like Susie said, that you couldn't avoid knowing that it was going on. And if you wanted to participate, it was there for the taking. So thank you for doing a great job of embracing the community and really reflecting, I think, what our concerns were. Good job.
And then we have another hand raised from Barbara Solomon.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Thank you. Okay, just quickly, I just want to say kudos to Adam and Martha Bataglia for all of their work in completing this difficult process. In my opinion, the process was long, complicated, and at times a little controversial. And I have been impressed at every step of the way, at their willingness to adapt to and honor local concerns and their very, very excellent work. So, you know, Cordera is so lucky to have such an excellent staff. So thank you.
Next up, we have Robert Pendoli.
Thank you. My name is Bob Pendoli and I'm speaking for the Marin Environmental Housing Collaborative. We call ourselves MECC. We're a small group of volunteers who advocate for affordable housing that's environmentally appropriate. And the board has asked me to call in and congratulate you. We think you've done an excellent job. The leadership starts at the top with a council. You certainly provided that. You gave the staff the direction and the authority to run an excellent city, community participation program and followed through with excellent analysis and staff work. I'd like to take the remaining time, remaining time to put a little historic perspective on this and it goes back fifty years. Fifty years ago, the county adopted the countywide plan in response to development proposal called Marincello that was going to develop significant parts of West Marin. The and that that plan said that as a county, we would meet our housing needs by developing along the one-on-one corridor. We executed half of that plan with aplomb, did an outstanding job, creating the open space district, really innovative zoning to protect agriculture and other open space resources. But there was no follow-through on the housing. Instead, significant portions of the one-on-one corridor were down zoned. Let's take in fifty years. You have turned it around. You've shown how it should be done. So congratulations. This is really a landmark for the county. We know that other cities, Mill Valley and San Rafael in particular, are going to be following your lead. So again, thank you and congratulations.
Next up, we have Sebastian Jakovics.
Good evening, council and staff. My name is Sebastian Jakovics. My family and I are commercial property owners in Cordera. We own the properties at two Pfeiffer, ten Pfeiffer, one ten Nellen and one fifty Nellen, which consummate together about three and a half acres that are one of the sites to be rezoned. My brother and I own and operate Fitness SF. We've been in Cordera since nineteen ninety-one originally as Gold's Gym. So we've been in this area for decades. We built the newest office building in Cordera that also has the new vet hospital, Twin Cities Vet Hospital in it. We consider ourselves vested community stakeholders. We both live in Kentfield and have raised our families here. I think that the presentation by staff speaks for itself. The community, the the council, everybody who lives and works in Cordera are lucky to have a professional staff that is so diligent. As a property owner, they were very transparent with us. They did a lot of outreach. They were collaborative. And I must say, as a developer and a property owner in other counties, especially in San Francisco, this was a very refreshing approach. I think that living in Kentfield, I've seen some of the antagonistic redevelopments, especially here recently, that was approved on Magnolia, right below where I live. And so I think in taking something that can be very controversial, such as more high-dense housing and implementing this plan in a careful approach that is well considered. And I just wanted to, as a property owner, say that I feel very lucky to be in an area that is, has such a professional team working diligently on behalf of all the different stakeholders. So we just wanted to provide our input on that and want to thank you for the consideration of this proposal.
Okay, thank you. And that was our last hand raised and we don't have any email public comment.
Okay, so with that, I'll close public comment and bring it back to the dice for final statements. And then I think we had two things requested to make motions and vote on.
That's, yeah, that's correct.
And also, we're looking for any interest in trying to explore becoming a pro-housing designate. Anyone want to start us off?
Well, just speak to supporting the idea of exploring the pro-housing designation and, you know, what is our path to the thirty points?
Thanks.
And I would just add, I think Adam and I had a conversation about this before. There's also the option of looking at PDAs, for instance, out at the village. So maybe that could be part of this because that makes us eligible for additional funds and aid, I understand. So it's sort of a parallel effort that could be included.
Sorry, Pat, I know I've heard the term before, but I'm blanking on the acronym. What's a PDA?
A PDA is a development area, a priority development area. Thank you for the priority word. Yes, priority development.
And that's because of its access to the freeway or?
No, it just means that the town says this is an area that we would like to develop and as a result, we get assistance. Adam could probably explain it in more detail.
Well, there's a, it gets, you know, there's, there's new acronyms every, every month in the housing world, but there's priority development areas, which have been around for a long time and those are generally have been. There's only been a couple in the county that have been designated. I think a couple in Santa Felas last time and those have generally been used to receive planning funding, if I'm correctly, and grants to accomplish sort of specific area plans and promote new development. Then there's a new designation called Priority Development Sites, which has another set of criteria and it's just now coming out. And so it's sort of like a pilot program at this point where certain sites can be designated and then receive funding for pre-development work or for facilitating development with a property owner or other sort of, I think there's even, you know, zoning assistance and things like that. So that second one is probably more relevant now, just given where we are in sort of the implementation phase. And so that's something, I know there's a, a very short deadline on that one approaching, but I know there'll be sort of cyclical, so they'll have additional opportunities in the future for that if you want to. And we could also talk about that as well during the conversation about pro-housing.
Thanks. First of all, I'd like to thank, I recall you guys, the dream team. I think staff, it seems like you're like the face for the town, but I think with the consultants, I just think, Adam, you put together the perfect team and I think the proof is in the final product. So I think it came out great. I think you guys did a really good job with doing the zoning now and not waiting the two years and having us come back and revisit this. I think by doing it now, it's just, it's a lot cleaner. Some of it's a little bit ironic. I was talking to Martha to get today and it's kind of like, you know, two years worth of all this work and you boil it down to like the last twenty minutes or so and then that part of it's done. It's just kind of ironic, but it is what it is. I think though that we closed one chapter, but we're opening another chapter, which is the implementation. And I think that you're going to have to get creative with, whether that be the PDA, whether it be workforce housing, senior housing, trying to figure out funding because down the road, you know, five or six years from now, the proof is going to be in the numbers and that's what's going to determine the success of this housing element. If we're sitting here and hey, we're like, you know, sixty percent or fifty percent, that's great. If we're at zero, we won't be there, by the way. You know, it's another story. So again, I think that's how we're going to measure the success of it. But overall, I think it's been a great job and a fantastic journey, I'll say for, again, for all of you. So with that, thanks. And then I can support the pro-housing also moving forward with that.
So in other cities or in other cycles here in Cordera, this would be the part where the angry mob comes out with pitchforks and torches and all of that. And instead, what we're hearing, right, is folks calling in to give public comment on what an incredible process this was, what a good job you guys did in engaging the community. We've got residents raising their hands to participate in a video talking about how important housing is. And I think all of that really just speaks to what an incredible job you guys have done. So I'm so grateful for the work that you did. You know, I think it really just speaks volumes to the fact that you really went that extra mile, invested the time and the resources in truly engaging the community and building consensus. And that is why this process has been such a success. So thank you so much. Hats off to you guys. Really impressed with your work, excited to support this. And I would also definitely be interested in seeking a pro-housing designation.
All right. Pro-design, pro-pro-housing designation, are you interested in that?
I would say that I'm interested in hearing about it. I'm a, I'm a little concerned that it's much easier for residents to embrace all this theoretical housing units, but once they see the story polls and once they hear the proposals, it's good, could be a different thing. So I just want to keep making sure that we're not becoming too enthusiastic in this pursuit.
I would encourage you in exploring what it means to be pro-housing and what the benefits and sacrifices that the town would be making.
Okay.
I'm short for words. I cried tears of happiness about the video. I was a little embarrassed, but it means a lot to me, what you've done, so.
And if I, on that note, I also would be remiss if I didn't also thank the council's work over the last two years in supporting staff and moving this process forward and all your guidance in also through this process, as well as the planning commission as well, has been extremely valuable for staff and helping us move this forward as well. So thanks to our government officials and all the volunteers.
All right. So can I, can you bring back the slide that says the motions or how we would conduct?
Can we do both motions, both at once? Okay. With that, I'll go and make motion. Before I do, I'm just going to miss the pop-ups, by the way.
Be more for others.
Now you have a climate action committee there. With that, I'll go ahead and make the motion to, I have to blow this up to number fifty font, Adopt Resolution Number thirty-four slash two oh twenty-three, which adopt, that's adopting the Cordera Housing Element for two thousand twenty-three to two thousand thirty-one and also adopting Resolution Number thirty-five slash two oh twenty-three by adopting the update to safety element, including chapter seven and chapter eight and also, sorry, and also the conclusions regarding the final, final SEIR and certification, certification.
I get a call?
We didn't have Councilmember Thomas's mic on, but I will say in the record, she seconded the motion. Councilmember Casissa?
Yes.
Councilmember Avasio?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beckman?
Yes.
And Mayor Lee?
I am.
Thank you. Motion carries. Congratulations.
We just got a quick picture of the dream team. Really quick, if you guys don't mind, just maybe just behind them, Marina, if you don't mind taking a quick picture. Got to get a picture of the dream team.
As part of the patient assessment. No, come on. I don't know who's.
We're sitting.
I don't know why we're doing this.
All right.
Thank you. Thanks.
For your newsletter.
Okay. Yeah. Would we, it's going on two hours now for council. Would we like a five-minute bio break so that they can reset? And, okay, so Rebecca, five minutes just for a bio break.
Any else is going around?
So we're going to move on to item six, the business items. Item six A is the consideration and possible approval to perform a one-time application of herbicides to the east and west fields at town park for the purpose of improving the sports field conditions. Do we have an update to this from the original agenda item?
Yes, we do. Thank you, Mary Lee and members of the council. So I'm Marjorie Suko, Director of Public Works, and I have here Barry from our director, Director of Parks Recreation. And we're going to co-present kind of some of the work that's been happening here for the last year plus related to the sports field maintenance.
So I'm going to give kind of the first, as you all know, town park is the jewel of Corder Madera. It is active every weekend. It is a center and hub for both youth and adult sports. You have soccer, you have lacrosse, you have rugby. You have flight football, you have tennis, a very active community who uses that park. We partner with local nonprofits, Twin Cities Little League and ourselves as Corvina FC to provide quality programs for youth and community. Corvina FC is probably the largest user of the park. This year had about 1,200 total kids playing from the ages of five to 18 and really benefit kids for both the competitive level soccer and the recreational level soccer for opportunity year round from their fall season to their summer and their spring clinics. So we're here kind of to give an update and I'll pass back RJ.
Same. So as mentioned, there've been a series of meetings for at least a year plus regarding how to improve the field conditions. And a lot of those were, you know, the conditions of the field really did degrade over our, you know, multiple years of drought. We had to reduce irrigation. We obviously just had why, you know, less rain in general. And so the field suffered and but as we started to get more precipitation this year, lots of it. You know, we were looking at commitments to try to get the field at least back up to its pre-drought levels. So we started meeting with some of these stakeholders to kind of brainstorm and look at our various maintenance practices. Prior years, we would do one aeration event per year and one seeding event per year. And in bringing some specialists in and also introduce Jeff from Sierra Civic Turf Supply, if we can make sure he's on and available. He's been assisting us with collecting soil samples, looking at the fields, recommending various types of soil amendments, fertilizers and seeds. And that has kind of brought us today to discuss some possible options. But one thing I wanted to, before we dive into all of that, I did want to share some more recent information. We did have the fields re-inspected and one of the changes that is important to note is at the time, the staff report was written, we had believed that the most kind of dominant red brown weed that was, was causing the lack of turf growth was a species called red thread. And we now believe it's called path rush. And something to be, to be aware of there is that in considering a possible herbicide, there are some that would handle and treat red thread, but it, it between what I've researched and what I've been told by Jeff and others is that there really is no herbicide treatment for path rush. So that is something important to know and, and kind of a important information that, that is different than everything that's spelled out in the staff report. In addition, I also wanted to make comment that these are some of the photos that were received back on June 6th. I suspect they were taken just before that. And you can see that the condition is in bad shape. Our team did a second aerating and seeding and fertilizing event on the east field on between May 22nd, May 24th. And if you go out there today, these are photos from today, they have actually significantly improved in those areas in the three to four weeks since. So really we're, we're you know, presenting that the aerating seeding fertilizing is actually responding to this particular variety of weed species. And Jeff can really speak to the kind of science behind that. And therefore, we believe that is a an approach that we think will, if we do it potentially one more time, which is part of the discussion tonight, could yield even better results ahead of the soccer season, which is set to begin in early August. And so I just want to make that clarification before we get into a series of questions and dialogue. But that is the current recommendation is to discuss the options, but really the recommendation from staff is to proceed with a aeration, fertilizing and seeding event prior to the August sports season. And with that, I will open up for questions.
Is there anyone that wants to start us off with questioning?
Thanks, RJ. The consultant on this is Sierra Pacific Turf Supply. Is that correct?
That's correct. They, so yeah, Jeff is here virtually and can answer questions. They do sell a seed and fertilizer. And then also that's the area they represent. So yeah, they're very well versed in this.
Do they also sell herbicides?
Um, that's a question for Jeff.
Yes, we do.
Okay. That's my only question. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. So I have some sort of maintenance ongoing questions. So first, how is it? How is that field irrigated?
Yeah, the turf fields are spray irrigation predominantly. A typical would be, I believe it's three times a week. During the drought, that was reduced down to two and even at lower volumes. So significantly less water than under normal conditions.
Okay. And the irrigate, sorry, the aeration and reseeding. What is anticipated going forward? How often will that need to be done once it's established?
Yeah. So we, we put together plans, I would say last fall and in discussions with Jeff and you know, we started with a soil amendment, which was first a new step to really get the soil to optimize it for turf growth. And then you know, look, you, you could aerate the field every month and, and you would get more and more performance. But you know, at the same time, there is a limitation to costs and resources and all of those things. So that was you know, at the time, we felt that let's try and do three this year compared to one as kind of a pilot and let's see how that goes. And we felt that that funding level was within kind of the, the budget that we had for various kind of town park maintenance. But obviously if this turns into the new normal or something even more robust, then we need to identify where those funds could come from. And, and I think it's probably also a good opportunity for Jeff here to speak about the science behind aerating. I could try, but he's just much better at it. So Jeff, if you may.
Sure. So basically, the the availability to get oxygen into the soil profile is the best. We know everything needs oxygen. And that is the most important element is available. So over the past years with only airifying at one time a year, the it's not able to be, the oxygen is not able to be in the soil as much as possible. So by being able to go out there three times a year, it's going to be healthier for the grass, everything, all the inputs that you put onto the turf for both the soil and the actual turf grass will be better be, will be better utilized of that. So the first thing that we did was do soil testing. And based on the levels of nutrients in the soil, we knew that it was a very hard, tight, compacted soil. So first thing to do that is loosen up. So that's why we'll increase the aerification as well as apply gypsum, which will loosen the soil. And we, it was also suggested, I made the suggestion that instead of the traditional hall core tying that you use to take the whole plug out, they've acquired some solid core tines. So all you're doing is punching holes in there. There's no mess. Playability is much better. It bounces back much faster, but you're still getting air down into the soil. So that's the process. And that's why we're doing what we're doing.
Yeah. And I'll clarify that further. So you've probably seen the, you know, cork size plugs that, that go on the fields after an aeration. That's what we've historically done and, and it works just fine, but it could disrupt play because you've got these nuggets all across the field. We've purchased a machine that will do more of a slightly bigger than a pencil tying. And it's solid, so it doesn't pull material out, but it still does create a hole that then can let nutrients in. So you can actually do it potentially mid-season or during play, not actual active play, but during the play of a season. So it opens up some opportunities.
Right. And then, so the grass is looking better. Is something happening also with the weed that they were trying to get rid of in this process? Or, or is that still an issue? But?
You know, what we were seeing, we last met out with the stakeholder group in May was that despite the, the tons of rain, the soil amendment and the seeding event from the fall that it still hadn't reached the levels that they desired. But that was also around the time we did our second aerating. And so at that time, we, you know, there was still a lot of, I guess, disappointment about the performance leading into the season. And I think, at least from my perspective, I've seen a big improvement over the last few weeks since we did that second round. And given that, I'm hopeful that if we do it one more time, it'll even get even better.
Okay. So, so what I'm wondering is though, is, is the grass now overtaking the weed? So the weeds, I mean, I'm just wondering what's, what's happening to those weeds?
Yeah. Jeff, do you mind speaking to that? And perhaps also explaining that based on the prior varietal of red thread, why that one was more challenging, but this one, I think you explained to me is, is is, is not likely to maintain growth when it's aerated properly. I think we had a conversation about that.
Right. So the, the best defense for weed is a solid turf stand. So that is by far the best. If you, if you have a full cover, healthy vigorous growth, the weeds aren't going to be able to establish themselves. Establish themselves and the turf grass will outcompete. Because of the drought, because of situation, the turf grass suffered and that's when we come in. So that's what we're trying to catch up. So yes, your question was. By incorporating more seed, giving it more grass plants in the on the fields. It will start to outcompete the weeds. The path rush that we're talking about. One of their, one of the characteristics is it does very, very well in a compacted areas. Well, through the aerification that is being done, it will start to alleviate the ability for it to take hold. And to outcompete the turf grass. So by aerifying, alleviating the compaction, incorporating more seed. Should be able to outcompete the path rush.
Excellent, excellent. And I think one more question. Those fields, are they used for both practice and for competition?
Yes, they're used for both practicing competition heavily in the fall and then the spring mostly just for clinics.
Okay, and will the, you know, regular use impact when you can re-aerate? Or can you, you know, everything can go on?
So the pencil tie narration can be done during the season. So in the morning before they're on the field. The plug aeration is not ideal to do during the season because it leaves those big plugs behind and they take all the mix back into the season.
I think that's it. Thank you.
I have just a couple of quick questions. There was mentioned in the staff report and actually a couple of people asked me directly about this. Is there anything that can be done with regard to pulling the weeds or using that labor force of twelve thousand? Or I'm sorry, twelve hundred kids who signed up for soccer. I know they'd love to do something and I think their parents would love the idea of something, but is there anything practical they can do? And then the second question is something that used to be a big deal in the fields and I haven't heard about it lately. But is there anything that's organic that's in line with our integrated pest management program? Which I looked up today was from two thousand and seven. It's been sixteen years since we put that in place. That would help deter the geese from from using these fields.
So I'll just speak to. Part of that and I'll let Jeff kind of speak to the rest, but we did also meet with some contractors that specialize in. You know, digging out rehabilitating fields and they were recommending to go down eight inches. So I'm not saying that picking them by hand wouldn't work, but. If they're recommending eight inches, there's some reason behind that, but Jeff, I imagine it wouldn't hurt. So Jeff, do you want to elaborate on how successful that might be for the fields?
Uh, the hand picking would be extremely labor intensive. It has been, I I've heard of some places, some golf courses that have done it. But it was abandoned pretty quickly, trying to hand pick. Secondly, the geese. The they're just a nuisance everywhere, organic and all that. There are no real good solutions to geese problem except for border collies. So in golf courses, they have trained border collies that ride around with the maintenance workers to scare off the geese. But no, no real sprays or things that could be put on the. Turf that is effective in. Making it uncomfortable for the geese.
So just to follow up on that, on the hand picking, I wasn't actually thinking hand picking, but using, you know, a weed removal. Tool, i- i- is it, would it be a valuable thing in parts of the field that are really more overgrown with weeds? Or i- i- is it just not a good idea? Because I thought it sounded like a good community building idea, a good way to. To say to the kids, hey, you just don't spray stuff to get rid of it. You takes work and 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 pride in the fields. It just seems like something that we we'd get some support for, I think. But if it's not worth doing, it's not worth doing. So.
I I would say, you know, you're looking at, I think that we've calculated about three acres of fields. Between east and west field and. I haven't ever, I don't have any experience with hand picking some of the weeds, you know, the broadleafs that are out there. The path rush, which is the main concern. Very, very difficult to pick out by hand when I was going out there trying to get samples of it. It basically just like falls apart when you're trying to remove it from the turf.
So you you wouldn't recommend attempting it?
I I would not, no. No, I I was, you know, because this is, it were in probably about the sixth month of trying to battle it. By just improved cultural practices. So we can see how that goes.
So I mean, as of this morning, I think there's, if I had to guess, three areas that are very much worse than the others. So if you wanted to do a little pilot test run, you could target those areas and.
I might just head out there myself.
Yeah, let me know when I'll come with you.
Will you? Will you? Will you show me where those are and we can go take a look and? Because if you're not going to do any herbicide, then there's no, I was thinking, okay, if it was going to be like, we have to get rid of it. As much as we can by hand and then the herbicide would be applied. If we're not going to apply any herbicide, then there's no real rush to get to do a weed clearing day, right?
Yeah, well, we would try to aerate it one more time, at least a month before the season and also continue to fertilize it. So we just coordinate those and and make sure that as we establish new turf, we're not picking those parts either. The other thing that. We're even trying not to mow it because even when you mow it, you start moving the seeds around and stuff. So it's actually better to let it grow until you're ready for play. So same idea if we're picking and make sure they don't get dropped somewhere else in the field.
Right. So you're willing to let us kind of look into it? And then maybe see if the football families feel that there would be support. Seems like a great Saturday morning in the summertime thing to do to me, but.
Yeah, yeah.
Thanks. Is there a point where you know that it's worked, what you're doing? I mean, it sounds like it's working, but is there a point in time where you go, hey, this is, it's worked and we need to use this plan going forward? Or we need to abandon it and go to something else? Because I know we've been talking about this improvement since like two thousand eighteen or so.
Well, I mean, there's certain things that just aren't going to get fixed by positive turf growth. I mean, there's undulations in the field due to. You know, differential settlement, right? And even though we did actually bring in a large five ton roller, like you would see on a paving job that took out the minor undulations. You know, you can't do anything about the one foot and two feet undulations here without completely redoing and regrading the field. So we can focus on doing those other things and and do our best. I guess the other question is, you know, for me, it's, you know, I felt compelled to try to bring it to the performance levels pre-drought. And then beyond that, it's a matter of, you know, desires by council and others as to. Are we trying to then also up the performance to a higher level? But it was clear that during the drought, the field suffered.
So we almost like putting a Band-Aid on it to a certain degree?
I I just view it as getting back to the previous normal and then. Seeing how it goes in that process.
Okay, and then you mentioned, you said stakeholders hadn't been out there since May or so. Do you plan on having them out in the next couple of weeks or so or next month so that they can kind of provide input on it?
Yeah, I definitely asked them to try to go today and actually see it ahead of the meeting. Because I was surprised having, you know, gone a few weeks without going myself and seeing it had done a lot better.
Okay, and then how much, how often are you watering those fields?
Sorry, or.
Watering them.
Watering.
Sorry, it's.
Yeah, we're on, I believe it's three times a week.
Okay, is it, what MMWD raised their rates, right? If I can remember, they were in the process of raising the rates. So there's an additional cost right to that. Okay, and just one last quick comment. On the whole thing with the goose thing, I think my dog is one of the few in Cordera. Years ago, she was actually designated, has an official goose chaser and she has the official Cordera goose chasing vest. Sorry, that's it. Thanks.
You already asked your questions. All right, so I have I have a couple of questions. One, is the Sierra Club a stakeholder in the park? Do they contribute any financial gain to the park? Do they maintenance it? Or do they contribute anything to the town infrastructure as far as an entity?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, another question is. I've done fish tanks a lot and to grow plants in fish tanks, it's a lot about pH balance, either in the water or in the soils, right? So, you know, part of it is, is with the soil amendments, is part of it that you're trying to get the right pH balance because it had been neglected. And so in doing that, I find that a lot of the undesirable plants are not structured to live within those pH balances. So I didn't see you talking about that, but that is another element that I think. It'd be, you know, informative to understand as ways that we could address it outside of herbicides.
Yeah, so I I don't recall off the top of my head, but there are about four amendments that were, including gypsum was the primary one that were applied. Around November of last year. And that was a seven thousand dollar investment that we normally wouldn't have in our annual program.
Okay.
For Dave, can I add?
Yeah, please.
Okay, yeah, so that was the first thing that we did. I think I mentioned that, taking soil samples. And the way that we look at it is we're not necessarily zoned in on. The pH, but all the, all the elements that go on to make the soil balanced. That gives the plant the best opportunity of success. So we're looking mainly at calcium, magnesium, potassium, sodium, some other bases and hydrogen. And the combination of that is what we're trying to achieve. You know, we have a set parameter for those. And that is what we're trying to achieve so that the soil is balanced and the turf will have the best chance of success. So yes, exactly. So getting back to your point, what we don't, we don't look at the pH per se, but we look at the balance of elements in the soil. But yes.
So that's you're saying in general in turf care, I went to the aquarium stuff, right?
Right, right, yeah, but it's.
I mean, is there, is that an added kind of thing that could be monitored or understood and tailored directly to the grass? Right? And the success of the grass over the success of other plants that want to live there as well?
Yes, yes, actually, one of the weeds that is also in the. Area is the clover and clover does well in areas that have deficiencies in calcium. So once we're bumping up the calcium like we did with the gypsum application. The turf grass will be able to or should be able to help outcompete the clover because it's given the nutrients it's need. So yes.
Right, so then as part of that, you know, I I think. For me, you know, this is an ongoing issue. We have twelve hundred kids, which means two parents per. You're talking about half the town of Cordera and we have regional people that now come. It's quite a large constituency. I think it's the vast majority of the actual funding for the functioning of the park. And I don't know why we're being so cost conservative in addressing the issue at this point. You know, we're trying all these other things that are cost effective. But I also get, you know, very effective counterpoints about why we might not want to explore that. And and think more sophisticated and maybe put our money towards, you know, the very thing like, because I can give you exact reasons. Some of the kids that go out there have had leukemia, right? So when I get constituents that say this thing may or may not cause it, I don't know, but it definitely makes me wary. But I still want those kids to go out and play after they've recovered. So like, that's the kind of thing that I struggle with. So, you know, I want to ask, like, with the additional members, right? We have twelve hundred now. Before it was eight hundred, it went down to like six hundred. That's a lot of people. How much does each one of those members of the Cordera FC bring to the to the table as far as money? Where their parents are paying basically to have their kids. Do athletics on the fields.
Well, I think, I mean, it depends on, so the comp program is much more central than the rec program is, so it balances out depending on how much they're paying. Exactly, I couldn't give you a top man.
So I I think it would be important to understand how much these constituents are basically adding to the benefit of our fiscal health. And then really determine what an aggressive plan is to address their field conditions. Like if it means aerating it every month or something, I would like to have that dialogue. That's me and I'm asking a question if we can do that.
Well, I, yes, and I, so I think in looking at the budget. The actual revenue that comes in under the, and this is one of the reasons why the budget was actually, I think, turned into these program areas. There is now a category that talks about sports, sports programming. And I think it is a significant revenue of about nine hundred, almost nine hundred thousand dollars expected in fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. However, and Tim, correct me if I'm wrong, you know. We're actually, there's also a a cost associated with that as well. Essentially, the staff, the relationship between Cordera FC and the town. You can speak to that.
So there are large costs associated with running the program. Yes, a lot of revenue is brought in. There is a lot of costs associated out. Obviously, if we have more funds to put towards it and benefits the program, absolutely, and people want to stay with the club.
The other thing is, is just a strategy where if we decide and work with the town, is there a way to basically do a few years? Where there's additional monies that you could contribute within that club to meet the club goals?
Right, so so in in the budget, again, the expected. If you want to call it a surplus of, when you take out the expenditures and the costs, I think it was about a hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. The next fiscal year, that would be essentially additional monies that would be coming to the town, the parking wreck. Department, which gets redistributed right now. But I think what you're saying, and and so part of this is going to be the conversation we have. And I, you know, we can have it separately or a part of the the master plan process, but there are a lot of park needs. And I think there is one of the, this is certainly one of the improvements that I think we've been highlighting as we. Go through that process of what potentially we could spend, you know, monies for. But there are limitations when you think about other options and there's always going to be trade-offs in that conversation. So we didn't want to necessarily push that one forward without sort of considering other potential.
So would you be looking for us as we discuss this tonight, when it comes back to council for discussion? To kind of give maybe policy understandings across the board about what we would.
Not not tonight, no. Tonight is really just about the actual direction on getting this field. Into condition in terms of our maintenance approach, which I, you heard staff's recommendation on our maintenance.
Well, I guess what I'm asking is. Currently, you're just going to go down this trajectory. You have the money for it or is it that you're looking for us to discuss whether there needs to be an even more aggressive?
Well, we're we're into timing right now, just about what we can do for the start of the soccer season. And then we'll, we can have a different conversation about approach for ongoing and moving forward. But this is really about here now for the summer as, you know, the way that we agendize this, this topic.
Okay. Amy, I don't mind if you if you just like to share, just so like.
Yeah, I I was just gonna say, you know, we. We are a little, we we should stick as close to the agenda topic as possible. It's a little odd here because the recommendation at the time the agenda was prepared. Was application of a herbicide, herbicide, I don't know, herbicide, herbicide. Or I don't know if it's if you're British, it's herbicide. But what, so we we somewhat changed the discussion for, you know, just an update on what the proposal is going.
So I'm gonna ask you a question and I'm mayor, this keeps coming up. The the main constituency keeps coming and looking for a solution. And I have not given the tools or the understanding in a way that we can meet it yet. And so now I'm not able to talk about it and it will go on. And I'm concerned that this large constituency that continually have brought it up for years. Will not be like, how do I know that it's not accepted? What is the path forward? It, you know, because they had negotiated herbicide, that's also changed on their part, right?
I just, I. Good opportunity tonight as as well to hear from, I believe they are probably on the call. Public comment, and so perhaps they can also speak to how the town is addressing sort of the needs of. Of their constituents, which are ultimately the players, and then we can take it from there and decide how to approach.
But thank you for answering the question. All right, so with that, is there any other questions after? Okay, so I'll open it up to public comment now. So if there's anyone in the public that would like to speak. So I'll open it up, uh, to public comment now. So if there's anyone in the public that would like to speak to this, um, please stand up to the podium and turn on the mic. You have three minutes.
Okay, I think I got it. Good on. Okay, um, thank you. My name's Rika Gokanov. Um, I am a frequent user of the park with my family and kids and dogs, uh, live in San Rafael. Um, but uh, I'm here tonight with my integrated pest management hat on. I've, I'm not a professional. I don't have anything to sell you or professionals to write, you know, to um, to uh, to sell. And I'm not paid, but I have been working in this area for a long, long time. And I'm currently on the Marin County IPM Commission. I've been on it. I've been chair. I was part of it when they, the county decided to stop using glyphosate. And so I understand this is complex. And um, to your point, um, just quickly, the, the, one of the best things, I think, long term, uh, the council can do, in addition to the excellent questions you asked tonight, is really to revisit the IPM policy and what you want to direct everyone, including staff, to do. And the commitment the county made with a hundred and forty-seven locations, including some really complex ones and uh, not turf per se, but they directed staff to figure it out without conventional pests, herbicides, pesticides, whenever possible. And I think that clear direction was more important than the ordinance itself and has resulted in extraordinary um, progress. Um, for this specific example, with my yard smart hat on, which is a nonprofit that spun out of that work, we've had national experts on natural turf management come to this area. In fact, Chip Osborne will be back in November, work, or September, I think, working with Nevada schools. Um, there are ways to do this that will save you money, that will make healthier soil. There are options like using reclaimed water, which by the way, you have to add some calcium so you don't build up salts. Like there are solutions out there. And what's even better news, I spoke today with Pablo Rosales, who was an IPM award winner. He manages the beginners golf course. Sports tip, sports fields are tough, uh, golf courses are also tough. That's done without any pesticides now. And he has a lot of local knowledge that's very relevant for how this, how the turf can be improved. Um, bottom line is, I'm just here to say, congratulations on what's already being done. You guys did the right thing with starting with soil samples and, and, and management approach. And obviously, aeration and seeding is working. That's also what Pablo was asking. Uh, there are lots of other opportunities. I'm here to help, here to connect you with people who know more than I do. Thank you.
Is there anyone else, uh, that would like to speak in public in, in the, in the, in the room? Seeing none. Is there anybody online or?
We have six attendees and we have one hand raised from Clark Miller. Um, and I will say for the record, we did receive, I believe, eleven public comments via email. They are on the website and they were all shared with council prior to the start of this meeting. And Clark, whenever you're ready, you can begin.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Uh, my name's Clark Miller. I'm on the board of the Corder Madera Football Club and representing the twelve hundred families that have been referenced this evening. Um, I was at the last meeting and requested for this to be an agenda, so I wanted to just thank the entire group for hearing this item so quickly. Particularly RJ and Tim for their time that they've been spending on this, which has been a recurring issue for a number of months. I think you're aware from my comments last time that we've had to play certain home games this spring away in Sonoma and Napa because our fields were not at an acceptable level for competitive play. And so we are anxious to resolve this and not have to continue to come back and take valuable time from your agenda. Um, I did go out today at RJ's suggestion, and I think the fields might be improving. To be honest, it's hard to tell because I think they're doing the right approach in not mowing the grass. So um, it does look like it's getting better. And I'm thrilled that there's an approach here that doesn't use uh, an herbicide. I think that's the best solution for everybody. We just are very anxious to see that improvement manifest itself. Um, we do start our training in August and we're in a tight timeline where doing a patch and replace, re-sodding program was no longer feasible. So that's why we went down this path of suggesting the herbicide. But I'm glad that we have experts in the room that are able to suggest a different approach. So I appreciate all the efforts that the group is making. I think the larger um, issue I wanted to bring up was while we would request the town council prioritize these near-term maintenance plans of the town park fields by allocating sufficient funds and adequate staff in the public works budget so they can perform this ongoing maintenance program. And I'm hoping the two hundred thousand dollars of extra budget that we heard at the very onset of this hearing, um, may be even available for that. I think that's all terrific for the near-term maintenance. What our club is primarily and, and ultimately interested in is providing a uh, set of fields that are comparable to McKegney and Tiburon and the fields behind the Cor- the Mill Valley Community Center, where we have athletic fields that are going to provide long-term viability for the town's recreation and competitive sports programs. Um, many of our families pay around seventeen hundred dollars for, per season for the competitive program to participate. So yes, there is a significant amount of revenue the club generates for the town. And we'd like to see that revenue and others that the, the town council can appropriate um, to look at a long-term replacement solution. And the Parks and Rec Commission has identified that they'd like to see that long-term solution be a natural turf one. We're fully supportive of that, and we requested the town council expedite the review and approval process of the Parks and Rec Master Plan so we can pursue that natural turf solution. Thanks for your time tonight.
And it doesn't look like we have any other hands raised or additional email public comment.
Okay. So with that, I'll close public comment and I'll bring it back to the dice for discussion. Would anyone like to start us off?
Um, I'll just say that um, I'm a, myself, a very big soccer fan. I think it's one of the best games anyone can participate in because it fosters cooperation. It's, everybody touches the ball. It's a really, it's, it really is a very team building thing. You know, between soccer and basketball, I think they're the best things that, that kids can play. So I really hope that, um, and I'm happy that we were able to, at least at this point, there's a possible solution that will let the season open in August. Um, beyond that, um, coming up with a more, you know, complete solution like just even having it flatter, you know, just having it even. I think looking at that in the future is a really good idea. But um, you know, for, for my, for my two cents, I'm just saying, I think that we should um, move forward and um, do the best we can between now and August and hope that, you know, it's good enough. I guess, actually, I have one, one more question too, um, about um, who, the maintenance and the um, that's, that's, that's done by the, the company that, the Sierra, not by town staff, not by Public Works?
It's a combination of Public Works staff and um, Flores, who's our contract. Um, they do a lot of our um, landscaping and other things in, in parks.
Okay, and is that, um, you know, is that a strain on Public Works or?
This particularly, last year it was. Um, we had the combination of a rain season that just never seemed to end. Um, we had two people out on leave, so we've been about as short-staffed as possible. And then add this layer on, it, it was definitely a challenge.
Okay, and um, how does it pencil out cost-wise?
Give you more specific?
Well, you know, is it, you know, is there co- cost versus revenue? Does, you know, is it costing too much to do it?
I, I don't want to put Tim on the spot. I just can speak from convers- past conversations with Ashley that as of now, the soccer program isn't really a revenue generator. It kind of pays for itself.
Okay.
Um, and so, again, you know, there's obviously a, a standard that was pre-drought and it's easy for staff to say, hey, we got to get it to that standard. But if I'm hearing, we need it higher than, than that's where we want to hear from council, but as part of a different meeting.
Well, I also have a question. Is that the standard that we accept it as a town to provide to them? Or is that the stalker standard that they keep referencing as far as a national standard of all turf to be played at a competitive level?
Um, I would just say it's the historical standard here at Corder Madera.
And how is that defined? Like, do, like, I, right, I mean, so, so I think, I, I think we should, that's why I think we should re, like, have a, a broader discussion, either Parks and Rec level or somewhere about really, from a policy standpoint, what we're really building towards and what works best for the stakeholders.
Absolutely. It, it was really a prescriptive maintenance approach, right? An annual series of events and maintenance events that we did every year for decades or more. Um, and so, yeah, if we want to invest in that, then that's really an option, but for another day, we can discuss that.
Sure, absolutely.
Um, okay, just a couple of comments. I do agree um, with the caller that the long-term viability of the fields is of course the overall objective and that the natural turf solution, I was really glad when both the Parks and Rec Commission and I think a straw vote of the council, uh, revealed that we were all on that page. Um, I do think that the IPM program, um, I, I like the idea of, of re-looking at that. Um, the document that was included in the staff report um, was dated uh, twenty fourteen, outlining all what the IPM program actually meant. But the IPM program was actually introduced and, and passed in twenty, two thousand seven. So I would really like to see those original documents and see where we are in relationship to that. I thought, and this was just, I mean, I was involved in pushing the two thousand seven plan way ahead of our time, I might add. Corder Madera was, was way first on that. Um, but it's this, this language from twenty fourteen seemed like it had gotten a lot softer. And I just would like to compare, it may not be. Um, but I think just looking at the overall integrated pest management plan and making sure, I mean, it's not, nothing that has to happen right away, obviously, but somewhere in the work plan uh, to look at, you know, where we are and, and where we want to be overall on that, on that plan.
Sure, and, and we could certainly look at updates, but I would say that as, believe the whole time I've been Director of Public Works, we haven't used pesticides, period. So.
Excellent.
It's updating a plan that may never get used for the revised purpose, I guess is how I would phrase it.
Excellent. Well, that's good to hear.
It could be a one sentence, no pesticide, pesticide plan.
Well, no, I, I like the contingencies for do, using the least toxic and then determining based on how that works. Then what happens next? I think that's common sense. Um, but yeah, I, I hope that will happen at some point.
Uh, yeah, just a couple of comments. To me, it sounds like we should be running two tracks, one is short-term and then looking at a long-term solution. Because if the short-term doesn't work, we're gonna have to pivot really somewhat quickly. And I don't think we can sit here for another two years trying to figure it out. So I would be running two tracks. It sounds like there's resources within Marin County. I don't know where the consulting you're using, Sierra Surf, I don't know where they're out of. Um, no offense to get, to them, but it sounds like there's resources local that maybe you should be looking to. Especially if they're dealing with golf courses or athletic fields, they're gonna be familiar with it already. Um, that would be um, within Marin County. You mentioned about bringing it up to pre-COVID levels, the field. When I was on Park and Rec, which was back two thousand eighteen, nineteen, even before then, there was complaints about the field back then. So if you're bringing it up to a pre-COVID standard and people are already complaining about those fields, um, it seems like it's, no offense, it seems like it's not going to go anywhere, um, but I appreciate the effort you're giving. Um, Pat mentioned a policy that's dated two thousand fourteen. If we have any, that policy or any policy in general, if it's ten years old like that, it's outdated. And I think any policy staff just needs to look at that. If you have any policies that are that old, they need to be brought current. And I agree with um, Charles, if the policy goes on for pages and you don't plan on updating it because we don't use pesticides, then the policy is you can get rid of the plan and the town's policy is we don't use pesticides. And just leave it at that, instead of trying to do work um, around a plan. Um, I think those are pretty much my comments. Thanks.
Um, yeah, I think I would largely agree with everything that's been said. Um, you know, short-term, I'm, I'm glad to hear that it sounds like fertilization, aeration and seeding is, is looking promising. Um, definitely support moving forward with another round of that and seeing if that moves us closer to our desired outcome. Um, and then also continuing to work with our, you know, our stakeholders like Corder Madera FC. Um, and, and of course, local, uh, you know, local folks like Rika, who can actually, it sounds like, connect us to local resources to help us out here um, in terms of finding a, a good nature-based solution for the longer term. I think that's great. Um, definitely agree with, with Charles' point, uh, which is that the, you know, the fields serve a large uh, and very important constituency to us. Um, and I think a nature-based solution that is healthy for folks um, and healthy for the environment is probably going to be more expensive than just buying a bunch of chemicals and spraying those on the field. But I think our, our kids and our soccer players and our environment are worth it. Um, so I would definitely support um, looking at something a little bit more uh, thoughtful uh, and, and safe in terms of solutions. Um, I have to say, I'm a, a little concerned or surprised. It feels like we just had a very close brush uh, with potentially spraying pesticides um, in, you know, in town park, especially if that's something that we've had the good wisdom uh, never to do before. I don't want to say, you know, I don't want to say never, but I feel pretty strongly that pesticides are a solution of last resort. Um, you know, so much so that I struggle to think of uh, even an imaginary situation in which I might support that. Um, and, and I think the elephant in the room is that Corder Madera is an active participation in litigation right now against Monsanto, uh, a chemical company for chemical pollution. Uh, and so I, I, I'm surprised that we came even this close to, uh, you know, potentially buying more chemicals and spraying them on our land, especially so close uh, to two pretty important surface bodies of water, um, and in a place where our kids play. So uh, I, I appreciate staff's willingness to kind of pump the brakes here, take a step back, um, look a little bit more holistically. Um, and I, I'm glad to see that it feels like we're pivoting in the right direction. So, thank you.
Okay, um, so RJ, thank you for bringing this to me. I know the constituency asked you to, to explore those options as a quick remedy. Um, and so I, I, I don't personally hold you accountable for doing that. And also I just want to um, basically acknowledge that there's a difference between pesticides and herbicides and, and that, um, you, you know, and, and also, you know, pesticides at some point do control mosquitoes and other things that need to be mitigated in communities, right? And solve real-world problems. So I personally want to keep on the table options that keep the community healthy, even if it means abating blood-sucking animals, right? Like, for real. So, so, but that's not our job. That's not our constituent, like, that's not, that's a to- totally different organization that does that. So as a town, we can have that policy. But the reality is, and part of what I struggle with is the, the, what, what works for the neighbor that owns the lawn right on the other side is not what we're held to. So it's not really mitigating the problem across the board. And so really, like, you know, was an effective solution? Can we at least talk about it at the council level and expose it to the public so that they can decide? And I appreciate that you did that from a, from a public discourse standpoint. Um, so with that also, um, I would like to, you know, hear uh, the town staff report back what they've heard from us as far as, you know, how we're gonna proceed. And um, you know, how, how, how much we want to uh, dig into this and how much support you need. Um, you know, and, and options if it costs more money or whatever, how we can find monies to, to, to deal with this. Because as Fred said, he, like, you know, it has, it was there before I even lived in town, right? It's been here a long time. Um, a- a- as far as that standard, and what is that standard? How do we achieve that? Like, give us something to basically create a dialogue, either within the Parks and Rec and stuff is, yeah.
Well, I just think we appreciate the, the conversation tonight. Um, obviously, these aren't conversations because of the brown act that we can have off to the side. So um, it's very clear. So we will take that in and, and we'll, I think, at some point in the near future, discuss some of those options, short and long term, so.
All right, um, so you weren't looking for anything other than just feedback about how to proceed? So can we close this item now? Is everyone comfortable or did we want to share?
Clear direction to proceed in the manner that RJ has discussed this evening for the next, uh, for the summer program and to get the fields ready, yes, for the soccer um, season in August. For the soccer um season in August.
Okay, thank you. All right, so with that, uh, we can move on to item six B, which is a report and presentation of the Town Hall Project Interior Finishes and Furniture Selection.
Okay, if I may, I'm just gonna, I'll I'll start and then I'll let RJ introduce our 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 great design team here, but. Um, I have to say, um, this is. Exciting to be able to present to the town council um as we pivot. From what we've talked about before and shown images of before, which are mostly the exterior of the structure and building now to. Start talking about the interior of the new town hall facility. It starts to get us all very excited about where we're going and where this project is really going in this. New um uh town hall that we will all be holding these meetings in not too distant future here. So. Uh, so with that being said, you know, thanks. This is really a a follow up from the April meeting. Where the council expressed, several council members expressed a desire to see sort of just a progress update. Where we are. Um, and so this is really an attempt to provide that peek into the design process on our side. And so I'll let it RJ introduce the team and hopefully we'll uh have a nice viewing of of where we are in the progress we've made.
Right. Thank you, Adam. And um, share screen here as well. Get it into. Proper display. Um, so thank you, um, Mayor Lee, members of council. Um, we're excited to show an update on the. Corder Madera Town Hall Furniture and Finishes. And um, we've got. Several members from our design team here that I'd like to introduce. So first off, we've got Paul Beamer from Mac Five. He's um. Our construction manager, but also has tons of experience, has an architecture background and has um. Plenty of experience coordinating furniture and and other interior di- design e- elements. Um, we have Rebecca Udis from R and R Design Studios here, who's gonna, they're both gonna be speaking um throughout this presentation. And then we should have Ron Cappy on um. Okay, that will we will bring over shortly as a virtual panelist to also round out the team. Um, so we've been working hard since uh we. Got some conversations, I think, at the last item we were talking about um overall budgets for the br- project and addendums and contingencies. And so that has really propelled us into this stage where we're here to show an update on on the furniture. And um, without further ado, I'm gonna kick it over to um Paul and Rebecca to. Um, start presenting some of the work that's been going on.
Evening. Thanks for having us. Um, as RJ mentioned, I'm Paul Beamer. I'm with Mac Five. We're the construction managers for the new town hall. So hopefully, within about six months, you'll have a new place to hold your meetings. So to that end, uh, part of my role is to make sure that everything gets done on time and on budget. So Mac Five is. Uh, overseeing the construction, but we have also can wear the hat of sort of design coordinator. And in this case, the town has asked us to help with the pulling together the FF and E package. That's furniture fixtures and equipment. So if you turn the building upside down, shake it, everything that falls out is FF and E. So. And to that end, uh, Mac Five uh started uh meeting with the town staff to determine what the program for furniture. Needed to be uh on all levels from council chamber on down to janitor's closet. Um, so we've we've met. Talked about it and then subsequently heard from the council that they'd like a little bit more of a interior design. Uh, participation and and validation of that. So we've brought Rebecca's team on and in doing so. The architect, the interior designer and the construction manager are all participating and collaborating on how this thing is gonna look to make sure that. What we're presenting as the look and feel of the new council chamber gets met and. Part of my role is then to make sure that that gets done on budget. And gets delivered on time and we're right on the cusp of doing that. So um. Our team is tasked with making sure we're uh decisive in making decisions and moving this forward. And we started that by. Meeting with um a furniture dealership out of San Francisco that both Rebecca and I have worked with for many years in the past, one workplace. Uh, who has done this um on public projects uh many, many times. And so. They've given us the feedback and uh and what's available now and has started to pull budgets together for what this all might cost and. Uh, can we get it all delivered in a timely fashion? So um, to that end, I'd like to let Rebecca speak uh to her expertise.
Hello, yes, uh, thank you. I'd like to actually thank the town of Corder Madera uh for allowing me to come forward. A little bit about my background. I was born in San Francisco group in Fairfax, one of seven kids, local. And I've seen this beautiful town start so little into what it is today. Uh, when Ron reached out to me and said, hey, do you think you might be able to? You know, kind of just do some oversight before we spend money and make sure, you know, that we're going along. It was wonderful. Uh, we jumped in immediately. Um, the team existing showed me everything that was going on and the direction they were going towards and. There were a couple little minor red flags and we talked about them and that's what I love is that. We're here as a team. It's not to undo everything, but it's able to call out before it's too late. And um, based upon that, I think that you'll be very pleased with what we're putting together. And um, we're we're off to the races and um and may you enjoy the presentation. He's our boss. I mean, he's like, I kind of, no, I take that back. We've got so many bosses.
Those are our bosses.
Just like we're all together.
We're all working for you.
Yes, that's right.
Uh, all right, I'm uh Ron, you pitch in whenever you'd like, but up on the screen at this time is the first rendering, which is the plaza from the outside. Which uh the town has seen in concept before uh from a distance, but what we've tried to do here is show a little bit more about. What it's gonna be like to sit or wait out there on a sunny day with the uh main entry to the left side of the image. And the uh the bench wrapping around the the existing redwoods. And then behind that, we've uh tried to insert uh a couple of. Like lunch tables and uh outdoor seating chairs. And then uh a couple of benches up against the wall so that if you wanna go outside and make a phone call on your own, you've got a place to sit without. You know, sitting in the way of somebody's lunch or so. So. Uh, that gives you a sense of of what it's gonna be like to use that outdoor space. We didn't try to populate it too much. So that people coming out of the council chamber afterwards or larger meetings still had a place to get to without climbing through a bunch of tables. Shall we go to the next slide? Okay, so what Ron has developed here is an image of the inside of the new council chamber. This is sort of from the back. Uh, corner on the east side of the the council chamber looking towards the south. Uh, so the chairs that we've uh selected. Which we'll show you in a a subsequent uh presentation tonight uh are stacking upholstered and comfortable. And they are there to uh the the general look and feel of the. Council chamber is uh is trying to be uh contemporary and consistent with the the architecture. So so we have uh glue lamb beams over the top and dug fur uh ceiling there. And the floors are all maple. So there's a a bright bottom for all of this to sit on. And so we we thought we'd bring in some warm earth tones to to give it a little pop. Uh, we've also uh with uh Rebecca's uh concern um talked about adjusting some of the the paneling on the walls. Then initially, um, uh, Ron had suggested that they be cherry. And we think that over time that might get a little dark and a little heavy. And so rather than having too many wood finishes, we've. Uh, talked about changing that to dug fur so that. The doors to the outside and the windows behind the dais all have a uh dug fur interior uh face on them. And that the there'd be some uh continuity there and uh not too busy.
I would like to just pop in for a second. Um, one of the things that I really. At when I was reviewing everything. And I do this on all projects is that this is investment of money and I I really like my clients' money to go a long ways. To go to go a long ways, meaning that we have timeless design, meaning that the core structures, if maybe a few years from now you wanna change something out. It's not the entire thing. So that was what was driving the wood moving away from the red cherry into something that was a little more natural. That could just be a timeless look with the beautiful things that have already been put into play. So it's finding solutions without undoing everything, but taking that opportunity and. It was wonderful, all collaborating together and they we could all see it together, the shift and and making that recommendation.
Uh, shall we pull up the next one? So here's coming through the front door and looking to the lobby to your right with the lounge set off the side of the the elevator uh core there. We're trying to pull that same color palette into the lobby with uh the the earth tones, the rust. That may, okay, that may. Whoever writes those terms for all that, they make a. Um, and then some some darker finishes that will uh handle the the. The dirt and families and whoever's sitting in there uh over time that we, if we don't put too many light finishes in there that are gonna show their wear too soon. So we're trying to be practical about those things.
And that's something Paul and I have talked about a lot in drilling down on fabric is being so mindful about the performance of whatever we're gonna put forth that. You know, that they are definitely over fifty thousand double rubs in the white and back. I mean, it's all these things that. And uh so we're that we're having that because we want, again, we want whatever you're doing of longevity, low maintenance. And isn't a mate, we wanna pick colors that, yeah, it can get dirty. It's not the end of the world. It's not white. And that's where we want to kind of minimize that maintenance.
Good. Part of our influences came from our design director, RJ. Who suggested, uh, you know, some earth tones and lighter colors, nothing too heavy. Um, and so here we've got on the screen the the current palette that shows what the building materials are gonna be, not the furniture going into it, but. Um, the carpet, the floor tile, the hardwood floors, the Wayne Scott, the the paint colors for the walls and what some of the accent. Uh, paint colors will be and uh the dug fur for the bench out in the the plaza and in the rafters up over your head. With that in mind, uh, we should probably step into the furniture. So this was uh I helped pull together by one workplace and. Our uh initial conversations with them were to uh come up with a. Furniture that in my experience, I just completed a a similar project down the peninsula for Atherton Community Center. And it's about the same scale, the council chamber and that. So. We have some very current, you know, knowledge with, you know, what's available in the marketplace. And unfortunately, the pandemic, um, you know. Did a number on the furniture industry, just like everything else. But uh the areas that are focused here, the public areas include the council chamber, the dais. The administrative uh tables in front of them, the podium and the stackable chairs for um. Uh, guests. And then behind that is the conference room that also acts as the videographers um sort of control station. So there's a um a typical conference room there, then out into the the lobby, the lounge area that we've talked about. Uh, and this casual seating around there, RJ's suggestion was something like a restoration hardware. So that was some of our imagery. And then some uh benches through the lobby leading up to the the council chamber. The other areas included the um public uh works counter. Um, idea being that. The built in part of that desk um at accommodates accessibility at one height and walk up, stand up. Uh, interaction with the public uh at the other part of it, but people who are next up in the queue would have a couple of seats out in the window there. Waiting for um their turn. And then at the bottom of that is a uh like a console table underneath what will be a uh. A large monitor with activities in the town. The the console to table meant to be a display literature that comes into the town and.
Community.
Open for, you know, public to pick up on. So and then the last piece of that is outdoors, which I mentioned earlier is the uh. Uh, cluster of tables in the in the benches that we put outside.
So I wanted to just speak to just the um process we went through to obtain um. This particular furniture supplier. Um, we had convened with um everyone on this design team plus others and we obtained. I think it was three other um suppliers, uh samples and review proposals. And since all of these would be going through a cooperative such as Sourcewell or or another that already meets a public contract code. We just wanted to go one more step and really make sure we're getting the best team of suppliers and designers from that end. And so we we. We held that process to select um this one workspace. So and then, so yeah, we're gonna focus on each of these areas and kind of talk about furniture selections for each. So. So this is starting with the council chambers.
So the guest chair, uh, the idea being here to have something that was upholstered and soft. That if you had to sit through one of these council meetings for three hours or more, that, you know, you were comfortable. And and we're trying to get something that wasn't, you know, really clunky. Uh, this has a a metal base, but the back is um. Is plastic and it has some gift to it. So um over time, uh, you've got a little bit of flex there that makes it light, but. But comfortable to stay in for uh length of time. The dais, um. Or I, I'm sorry, podium. Um, the ideaing that it it needs to be wide enough that somebody can come and bring their a binder or a laptop and set it out. And it's got enough width to it without being overwhelming. So our thought was twenty four inches might be a little too cramped, but thirty six inches might be too. Grandiose. So we're aiming for something right in between. Uh, we wanted something that was AV. Uh, equipped so that you could have the microphone in it um and bring up the power from below. The the floor will have power and data in it so it can plug into that podium, even though it's movable and can be rolled out of the way.
We were also thinking, you just kind of touched a little bit about this. To look into the possibilities of having the town logo on the podium. Maybe it's cut metal, something that's not flashy, but that you're gonna be filming these, that people always know they're present. They understand where they are. And seeing the beautiful logo and and being able to just bring that in subtly.
And the the finishes are a a bit of a rendering here, but the idea is that the the same woods that we're using for the dais and the. The the paneling are are part of the the look of the.
And not only that, we've actually uh supplied, I mean, actually secured physical samples of our woods. It's no longer just from the computer and when we are looking at our actual laminate, anything, we're making sure it's coordinating because. There may be five different, but which is the one out of the five that's gonna be best with what we're working with. So that was something that RJ was so great and Paul is starting to reach out to the suppliers who are doing the work to get us our physical samples. So we're teed up.
Yeah, and just to comment on the kind of custom logos and whether it's on the podium or on the side of the building, you know, that's that's a community process. And one that we don't wanna rush and given um we're at a stage where ordering furniture very soon is critical for us to be able to move into the building. It, we've kind of separated those two and we'll try to run them parallel, but they're they're just on different schedules.
So, excuse me. Uh, this is the the admin desk um adjacent to the dais. So uh, we didn't wanna play this up. Initially, we started. Putting a desk with a return there that went to the ground and it just seemed too heavy uh for the the context. We wanted the. Dias to be the prominent feature. So we went to a lighter table with legs. Uh, that allowed us to feed the data and power up through that leg to the the pop ups in the top of the the work surface. But the wood on top of that would complement the the other woods in the uh conference room.
And the other thing is, uh, because this is the council chamber, I really had encouraged that we went with a nice dressier chair. With what you're seeing there. You won't find that anywhere else in the offices on something that was ergonomic. Looking that this is something that's timeless, classic will will be appropriate. And uh, we did a a little bit bigger version for the council members and down at this this table here, this is the smaller reduced version. I'll I'll get to showing that next, but there was intention behind that to create your spaces a little more lifted.
Yeah, and to clarify, they they are very ergonomic. They just have the look and feel of being um not just.
Not best chair.
Yeah, the best chairs.
And 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 though we're showing pretty pictures now, the. We'll go through uh what's called a a sit test where we'll have several of these and everyone gets a chance to sit it and see if it's comfortable.
Yeah.
So the at the dais, the the idea is that there's a step up in the quality of the finishes here and and the chair. So. It's all in the same sort of look, but this is a slightly upgraded chair.
So moving on to conference room, this is the one adjacent to the council chambers.
Close sessions, for example.
That's okay.
With the dice chairs, can we give comments?
Stop us anywhere along the way here.
Yeah, well, so 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 the only thing I have to say about this is I'm a big person. And almost every chair, the green ones we had before on these ones, if they have the auto lean feature, I'm always leaning back and it really is not ergonomic. So
That's why that's why we have a process in that you are test driving before purchase. So exactly.
We test drive it.
Chair and wheel you around, but that it is very important for you to feel comfortable and and test these. You just can't do it from the pictures. And that's why it's pretty typical in our world that that's always required. We do bring furniture on site.
And part of our challenge with the initial concepts here was to get a price point to the dealership so we could know if we're in the hunt financially or not. So this is just sort of setting a benchmark and then we'll fine tune it with that uh sit test. So the table here, oh, let's just the 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 table, the idea here was to keep it open underneath that there wouldn't be any legs that was in someone's way when they're swinging around through that, but that there was the opportunity at the middle of the table to get that power and data up to the top of the table without a bunch of wires hanging at your feet. So these are are set up so that the panels come off the the leg so you can neatly feed all that stuff up. And this and a- as far as quality here, the the look is of a hardwood table. The the way we get there is to maybe put a hardwood edge on it. And in this table specifically, we thought it was a little too thin in its initial profile and wanted a beefier wood nose on the front of it. But the the face of it would be a plastic laminate that matched it. For for, you know.
I mean, that's a loose terminology, but it can look like wood. It's like your tabletop. This is plastic. I mean, the laminate is all over. And I and I see you Pat like going, oh, my gosh. But in the world of design, there are some amazing new thing because technology has come into the world of design where we're able to produce such amazing things and know that we're going to have all our samples and everything. So don't don't be scared, Pat. Okay, we promise. You're going to be able to touch and feel and and be able to see everything. I just want to comment on this table in the world of big conference tables. A lot of times you're really looking with heavier legs, just to offset all the weight. I really like it because we looked, I mean, you're seeing the finite, but we have looked at as a collective team, having many meetings. Finessing and 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 me evaluating, say, I wouldn't do that because of this and that and us all working together, but that was chosen because of the scale of the legs and that it could be, that's like twelve feet, that that's a big table. And to allow so much flexibility of people coming in and out and and find seats. So it was with intent.
And case in point, the the plan there shows eight seats around the table. We want this chair to be the same as the admin chairs. So they ever needed a couple more, the same chair could come in and work here. Next.
Uh, we're going to take a, we we have to do a quick break because at nine thirty, we have to vote to extend the meeting. So we're going to go ahead and take care of that.
A motion to end the meeting.
I'll go ahead and make the motion. Send me another half hour to ten o'clock.
I'll second. Council member Casissa.
Yes.
Council member Avasio.
Yes.
Council member Thomas.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beckman.
Yes.
Mary Lee.
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries.
Sorry, no. So now we're into the the public waiting area, the lounge off of the the elevator. First thing you see when you come through the main doors. Some of the initial concepts were a bunch of chairs and small little tables. And everyone looked at it and said, that reminds me of the airport or my dentist's office. So we nixed that completely and came back and said, all right, we need to be able to sit small groups. Sometimes it's a single person or two people and maybe they want to be able to charge their phone or set down a a purse or something. So we've got two clusters of individual chairs with a a table in between it that matches the the finishes that we started in the council chamber. Mind you, the floor here will be that maple light color. So we wanted something to contrast that. So it's a little darker finish there. And then on the opposite side would be a sectional that would wrap around the corner with a larger table out in front of it with a that same table to to one side of it. So that if you've got a family, you can cluster together and and it's a little cushier.
And something that we really wanted to give the opportunity to this room, which we after kind of need is that this provides a little bit of flex space, you know, that people could break out. And that's something that RJ said, if I need a little mini meeting or something, we could go there. Or, you know, that and that's how spaces are really being worked in today's times. It's no longer corporate all the way. It's looking for these places and sit more personal on your laptop or someone come. And so this was a really great opportunity to approach the room in this this way. It's just so much more inviting. And and I think that you'll get a lot of use out of it, not only for the public, but even your own.
All right.
The all of our community groups as well, you know, this is a place they can meet and talk about various important issues and and have a nice space that they can count on to meet. So.
Next up is the the public counter.
Oh, this is, I think there's some bench seating ideas.
Out in the lobby, that's right. So while you were waiting to go into the council chamber, we thought it would be helpful to have nothing too structured, but one or two benches in the windows at the the hallway leading to the doors into the council chamber.
And something that we do pay or like, it's just a pet peeve of mine, no matter if I'm in hospitality, residential, commercial, it's the sitting. I don't like things too low. I think of elderly people. I think about the public like it's there's very specific heights that we need to achieve so that that it is comfortable just to perch there. And also not even the height, it's what is it constructed in how firm you're sitting because you sit on something that goes too low. So just know that we have that oversight as we're, you know, really going through everything that we're paying attention to that. And and that we'll be sure to achieve that.
Bogsters counter area.
So this is carrying that vocabulary from the the lounge off of the lobby into the the public counter. This is the same chair and same side table. And the idea would be to have a chair, a table and a chair and have two clusters of those sitting in the windows while you're waiting for your turn at the plan check counter. And then the console table fits into the Alco with the south end of that.
What we're trying to do is really that there's a as you come in through the building and no matter harmony, that even colors, the styles that it feels good and also allows if you needed to, because it changes in years that you could grab something from someplace else and change around if you need to as a town in using your spaces. So I think that was that the last side or?
Outdoor.
Or outdoor, yes.
So the challenge with the outdoors maintenance, if you put a wood table or a teak table, you're into a maintenance cycle. And so we're trying to avoid anything out there that's going to cause more sort of building department maintenance issues over time. So we went with synthetics and metals with, you know, powder coated finishes that will endure the test of time and the the elements out there and trying to keep it light and a little bit more entertaining. These chairs are flexible that plastic, I'm not sure exactly what material it is, but it's still very comfortable to to sit in outdoors with a a table that you could put four people up to. And then on the outside of that wall off opposite the the entry corridor, we wanted a little more contemporary bench. So there's two of those benches out there that we thought that if you needed to take a call somewhere else, you could go outside and take it and
And we were trying to also stay a little bit mindful of the colors because if it's dark, it gets really hot to sit on there if it's a metal or something. So there's like all these little things to think about when you're making the process. Selection. Was there anything else?
That was it.
Okay, RJ.
Here on this outdoor space, we've got that warm wooden round seat wall. So it's not all you know, metal and and more contemporary, modern.
That's stick built or is is that a customer? Is that a spec product as well?
It's a custom product. Yeah, custom millwork. It's part of the construction contract.
Just for the bench.
For these, the round seat wall. Yeah. So custom north for that, custom north for the dais and for the permanent counter. And several of the cabinets.
So all of this I did a reality check on them, whether we were going to be within budget or if we had to start adjusting quality of finishes or quantity of things. And all of this is still within our budget and are we going to get it there on time when the building is finished with construction? You'll have a chair to sit in when we get there. So with that, questions?
Um, no, yeah, we can take questions. So I think as previously reported, we have roughly four hundred eighty thousand dollars in the equipment and technology fund with about four hundred that four hundred thousand set aside for furniture, including the services that go along with that. So based on the feedback we're receiving, based on these specific selections for the permit counter, we're roughly in the one twenty to one forty range for the public spaces and then using some estimates of of prior projects, we believe the whole package is in the vicinity of three twenty five to three fifty. So we're we're within the budget that we have at the moment.
And I'd just like to make a couple of points before we open it up for questions. One, just that, you know, we are focusing clearly on the public spaces as part of this presentation. We're not going into depth on the staff workspaces or the the back of office stuff behind the public counter. I thought really it was what was critical for this update and just sort of the peak sneak peek in terms of where this process is going and how we're approaching this was to focus on the public spaces that our community will be mostly. That's where most of their time will be spent. There are some spaces in below. I know we have the archive, sort of that's sort of dual purpose with our staff break room downstairs. And so it's not like there will never be a public members down below, but but I think really for the sake of of where we need to get to. That was the focus. We do have some samples. The the only carpeting will be in the office area. So as we talked about the was the maple floors are are throughout the public spaces. And I and you know, while we're on schedule, I do want to emphasize that, you know, we need to keep this process moving. There's obviously, I think we're trying to give you a look inside our approach and how we're and and the design team that's sort of involved in in sort of making these decisions and the professionals that we have at our disposal, which is great. It was sort of my recommendation based on, you know, to to, and I think it was good. It's been healthy to bring Rebecca on on board to start to focus as we sort of shifted gears and started thinking more about the interiors. And that's going to continue as we move 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 forward in this process. And and this isn't this is a just, there's a whole nother aspect of this that I think we can we will be talking about, which is really the the details of that make, I've been talking a lot about this, that make sort of the a place and a space that really feels connected to our community, which are sort of the little details and features that artwork or whatever it is that we recognize is still out there, but we need to prioritize for scheduling purposes, this this discussion, well, this this piece of design work and we'll get to the others as we move forward. So with that, I think we are available for questions from the town council and any members of the public that may be out there.
With that, I'll bring it to the dice and ask, see, you have any questions?
Uh, thank you guys. Great presentation. One, just super quick question. The outdoor furniture. I the the metal one specifically, I appreciate making sure that they're not too dark so they don't get too hot, but I was wondering I'm I'm a little worried that they might also, especially in Cordmadera, be too cold to the point where especially if you're wearing like shorts or something, you might not want to sit on the bench or like, you know. You know, if you're wearing a short sleeve shirt, right, you might not want to like lean on the table if it's metal. So just just wanted to put that out there for consideration.
The chairs are synthetic.
Right, yeah, got that. So that's great. No concern there.
Yeah, and for practical reasons, that metal table just seemed to be the
Yeah, definitely understand the maintenance side of it. Just wanted to put that out there for consideration.
Yeah, that'll be considered. Okay, thank you.
You guys have a couple of quick questions. Are there screens in there for presentations? I know it's not part of the furniture.
Yes, so another part of Mac Five's scope is to take care of all of the audio visual equipment.
Okay.
So we've been in the back rooms figuring out what's here, how we're going to move that over to the new facility and what's missing to complement it, including the monitors on the walls.
Okay.
The microphones and how they get fed through the new dais and and how the the podium works with audio visual as well and gets fed back to where the videographer has all of his bells and whistles that turns everything on and off.
Okay, so it would be like a super long distance. My eyes aren't that great.
No, yes, so staff has also visited various chambers and Sonoma in here and has done some tours. So we've gotten a good sense of of what's out there and what to strive for. I think I've been to five myself and you know, we've seen some where they've got TVs everywhere and it looks like the Wizard of Oz. Others that are more simplistic. So we're we're really trying to do the best. And so really the the concept there is each council member or commission member, board member would have a small ten to twelve inch TV that would be a secondary screen. And then there will be a large TV in a nearby wall, likely in the ninety inch range. So.
You found a really big honkin' one.
See, that's where you're going to be sitting.
See everything.
The only thing I know is also, and again, maybe it's just a different approach for us, is the admin sitting. So there's three on each side because right now I'm looking at five people.
Right.
So it just it's just going to be a different look, right?
Yeah.
We're going to have to figure out how to divide and conquer.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and and there's a a scale issue that we've been working with. If you made table too big, then it's hard to get the public engaged. So trying to keep it to a a size that three people can still work at functionally without sort of taking over the rest of it.
Okay, thanks. And just one last question. There's enough. And again, I'm leaving it to you guys because you guys are all the experts. There's enough, I guess, I will assume there's enough public seating in there. You think it's sufficient.
Yes, actually what Ron did part of the design process to get the permit, he had to prove to the building inspectors, how many people are going to sit in there? So we know how much we can we can account for.
Okay, thanks.
And it far exceeds our prior council chambers. Even the one before I I it's, I want to say ninety chairs.
So I have just a couple of questions. I love the focus on the real wood and the cut wood, since that is the meaning of our name. So I'm wondering on the podium, that looked like a laminate. Is there any way that we could, I mean, to me, the podium and the dais are sort of things that seem like they should work together. Is there a way that we could use real wood on the podium? And the one that you showed has the, it's like two different halves. So I'm thinking how's that logo going to work with it already split in half? So just
This side of it, I think, was solid in the middle. Yeah, you we didn't, I don't think we had a good image of the front of it, but.
Okay.
Yeah. There's an image for it there. There's just a thing at the top, but down below it is a big wide.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, and and if the desire is to make them match with the dais, then certainly we can do that. The other option is to have some contrast, but
Yeah, I just
And they could both be in in a in a wood look.
But I agree with you. They need to be consistent. So we'll find finishes.
And I just, I guess what I I'm saying is that the podium seems like a really important place. That's where the residents come in. So I just want to make it feel as special as the rest of the room and
I'm hearing what you're saying. You want a little bit more of a just a little bit.
A little bit more of the rustic key, you know, the 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 custom mill work sounds great and it I hate leaving it out on the podium. If there's any way that the budget would allow that to go out. And then just just a couple of other, then that's just a request. I mean, you know, it's not, I'm not running things here. I just a couple of suggestions, the inside benches, I I really appreciate that. I think it's really nice for people to have a place to sit. But I do think with our aging population, people would really prefer a bench with a backrest and an armrest. I think just a a a straight bench with no back and no arm is going to have less value to our community. But if it's if it's a look thing.
More challenging to get because it's a transitional space that we're working with on these benches. Counters this, which is so important, is that it has to have a firm seat. So if you are elevated, you can purge and it's you're not sitting down here that I even it's it's like it, that's very important to be at the right height because it gives you a completely fundamental different look. It's more heavy. It's and this is a transitional space that we're trying to pass through. It's, it's like, it, that's very important to be at the right height, because it gives you a completely fundamental different look. It's more heavy. It's, and this is a transitional space that we're trying to pass through.
Okay.
Weight, but I hear what you're saying, and it is about having a firm seat and at the right height, so that someone who is elderly is very comfortable to sit and get back up.
Awesome.
And, and the benches there are opposite two of the larger restrooms. So it could be, you're just sitting down to wait for someone to come out.
Okay.
It's more for person.
I got it. I, I like the idea of the higher, uh, this higher seat. That sounds, makes sense. And then the outdoor furniture, um, when I first looked at it, I thought that the chairs and the table look kind of flimsy and too lightweight, like they, they should have a little more substance, but
It's part of us test driving.
I've seen these down at Atherton Civic Center now for a year and a half.
The plastic
Yeah.
chairs. Yeah, I guess I just haven't seen that material yet.
They're holding up quite well.
And that has to do with the technology in what's out there and the kind of things that are being produced for us to use as designers.
Right. The metal base, my, my question is, is the metal base solid? On those ones, is it the solid one where it's also solid plastic? It's not like a hollow, like more, it's a full molded like material?
Talking about the table or the chair?
She's asking about the chair.
Okay.
You were saying they look lightweight, but I think that those, at least model, those models that I've seen like that, usually they're, they're full solid metals and they're actually quite heavy and they have, it's a fully cast plastic that
That's right.
They're actually have some substance to them.
Yeah. These are all products that are commercial grade. They're meant to take abuse.
And, and my last question is, is on that, uh, subject about durability. So I, I love the look of maple floors. I've had maple floors in a house before and they were really soft. So how, what do they do to the maple flooring to make it more durable?
Presidential maple floors versus commercial, basketball floors are commercial. It's what you do to treat it and make it a commercially rated product. So this is a product that the team has picked out specifically to endure the all the abuse that's coming your way and it not be a maintenance.
Basketball floor.
Just have a performance with it.
Oh, yeah.
It won't be high gloss though, right? No high gloss.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna jump in and see if we can get Ron to join. Um, I see he's in the audience. Um, Ron, can you speak to the floors, please? Here we go. I see you, Ron. If you could just unmute, um, there's a question about the, the maple floors and, and anything else you want to add about the overall
Sure.
design choices.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, um, yeah, it's gonna be, um, um, more of a matte finish on, and there's two coats of acrylic and it's part of the spec and there's a warranty. I was trying to remember how many years for it. But, uh, we're, you know, going for durable surfaces, uh, throughout.
Okay.
In my previous experience as the architect for community centers, that take a lot of abuse from all ages, maple floors are the go-to surface.
Okay. Sounds great. Thank you for your presentation and I do want to thank staff for taking this extra step that wasn't necessarily planned, but I think was really important, not just for us to see it, but for all our teeming masses out there in Zoom land.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
I just said one thing I remembered. I thought of why you were showing, there was, um, in, I believe it was the planning office, there was like a table where you said you would have, you know, different things, literature, whatever about the town. And, um, was that going to be a place to put like pamphlets or paper or is that an electronic?
Oh, I can speak to that. So, um, the idea is for the, the TV monitor to display various events that are going on in town. So we have those tied back to the server. There's a whole software that, you know, you basically update it from your desktop and run any new information you want. You could run the, the newsflash. So, you know, anything that's going on. And then below that, it's not intended for you know, forms like building permit forms, but really just community event things, if we want to have that in pamphlet form, um, or sometimes we have, um, things from, you know, county mixed up about just how to be environmentally friendly when you're doing construction, that type of material potentially. Um, and then, yeah, so that's to answer your question.
And, and I think that you're, you're, it's like whatever's there is towards, who's in that area, the building department, it's people building. So it wants to be content that people are, they're waiting and they can get educated.
Yeah, and we're actually required through, um, some of these, whether it's our FEMA CRS or whether it's Big Stop, to have these publicly available for our community.
Okay.
We get credits for that.
Great.
Okay, um, so any more questions? Uh, is this something that we should open up public comment to? And okay, so, uh, if seeing no other questions, I'll close that and open up public comment. Anyone in room want to make a comment?
Oh, yeah, I, I got one.
Great, awesome.
Thanks.
President Jim Rizzo. Um, I think I do have a little bit of concern about too many woods, uh, too many wood species and, and, and then we see a bunch of furniture. It would be nice to maybe see a material palette with everything together. Um, seem that you have glue lamps, you've got a wood ceiling, there's wood paneling on the diocese, wood paneling. Um, don't see a lot of stone in there. Could be a good resilient floor, flooring option, uh, if the maple doesn't work out. But, uh, I think it would be good to explore some different flooring with all the furniture together, cause I feel like there's a lot, there's at least three, three or four species of wood in one room. Um, one other thing that came to thought, um, with all the hard surfaces in there, do we, are we gonna have some acoustical paneling, which may have additional fabric and additional texture that might want to be explored with the furniture, um, as a composition? So those are my two thoughts about one, one about the floor and one about, uh, the acoustics and as I think now we, we, the old, um, town hall, we had carpet, correct? Carpet. So we have a hard ceiling, hard floors and hard walls. So I don't know if acoustics are gonna play, um, a role in
Making interest.
Yeah.
The back wall behind the dais is all acoustic.
Oh, hold on, hold on.
Yeah.
Was there an, sorry.
It, I don't know if, did you say you're, you should just say who you are for the public?
Oh, I did, I did.
Oh, you did? I'm sorry.
I did, yeah.
I missed it. Mr. Jim Rizzo, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, um, yeah, I know that there's, there's something in the back, but I, I thought there might be something also on the sides that, you know, the renderings were depicting, but, um, you know, and, and, and maple does get a little bit pink over time. So that would be another consideration if we're, there's a color palette you guys are going for. That, uh, but I can't really tell because there's so many woods. Um, and that would be my comments. Thank you.
Yeah. Seeing no one else in the room. Is there anyone online?
I have two attendees, no hands raised and no email public comment for this item.
Okay, so with that, I'll close public comment and bring it back to the dice for any final thoughts.
Just wonder if we have somebody, you know, Jim Rizzo is a very well qualified architect who serves on our planning commission. Do we have somebody with Jim's skillset, um, sort of keeping an eye on things or, uh, involved on the committee? At all? I mean, I know too many
Ron's are, yeah, I mean, Ron's our architect who's designed many buildings, interiors, exteriors.
Okay.
And
Yeah, we have, it's an architect and engineer.
Yeah. I just, I just know Jim's architecture work. I've seen it. He's about excellent taste and, um, I say, listen to him.
Oh, okay. This was a publicly bid process.
Yeah, right, right. I mean, uh,
Anyways, competent architect.
We can go, um, no, it's all right. I mean, I, I think this is perfectly fine. If, if there are any council members, Ron, we have examples of other works that you've done and sort of the, where you're gathering some of your inspiration for your vision here in the council chambers and elsewhere. We've talked about that in the past and maybe that's helpful to impart some of that at a with, um, uh, either tonight or by showing, um, some of your other buildings, which we've shown in the past. Okay.
Yeah, can, uh, can you hear me speak?
Yes.
Okay, uh, what I enjoyed, we went through about a two and a half, three year public process. So I really see the building uh, as an outcome of the community, uh, with the workshop, we had workshops with, uh, taken a lot of the input. I enjoyed Jim's comments just now, you know, uh, so we're trying to mold this into something that really comes from the community. Uh, the central idea of, of, uh, surrounding it, uh, the redwood tree and creating this outdoor public plaza, this, um, me, uh, uh, an additional room, if you will, for some of the, uh, ideas that we started out with. We had looked at options of other locations. We had looked at ways to salvage the existing building. So we, you know, it's, we're in the middle of construction now and it's been a really fruitful process.
Thanks, Ron. Um, yeah, just to kind of compartmentalize kind of what we're discussing today. I mean, we have the construction contract, which included things like floors and, um, you know, so the wood, the hardwood floors, the, the, um, carpet, those things have already been purchased by the contractor, things like, um, you know, paint, we can always change, anything furniture we can change. Um, but a lot of those other elements are already basically would cost us money to undo. Um, so we, we, we are here to hopefully focus on that furniture element, but also make sure that it's all cohesive together.
I trust the process. I do. I just, you know, want to avoid any mistakes with regard to acoustics or weird, too many shades of wood or just, you know, I'm nervous. I'm nervous about this one.
Following up on her acoustic question and others that have brought up, uh, is there acoustic engineer that's available that could do an analysis or at least a recommendation on that? Uh, Ron, did you bring on acoustic analysis engineer?
Uh, no, we, uh, we met, uh, California state code for, uh, for acoustics in terms of the permit, uh, but we didn't have a specialist.
Right, but there are permit level like state mandates as far as acoustic performance that you
Correct.
created and had in your specs probably most places, right? Is it?
Correct.
Thank you for that. Um, there's no motion. It's just a discussion and a presentation. Uh, any other discussion points? No? Okay. Uh, thank you for bringing that forward. We look forward to further development and exposure to the furniture and, and it's, um, you know, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, so, yeah, um, we're moving on to item six C. This is the consideration, possible adoption of resolution number thirty-six, twenty twenty-three, approving the assistant town manager classification, job description, establishing salary range. Is a two meeting item introduced on June second. So would this be considered the second reading?
That's correct.
Yeah, if, if you don't, I'm sorry, if you don't mind, I'd like to make a motion that we extend the meeting another half hour, which is the last time we can extend it.
Second.
Okay, I'll be, I'll be quick.
Um, I don't Has to be an Council member.
I, I thought we could continue to, uh, we can continue. No, we only
We have to do every thirty minutes.
Every thirty minutes, but as long as
To be unanimous.
But like, it means that we could do it ten thirty, we could keep it going. No, we only
That's off at ten thirty.
So.
Actually, we can, we can check with Amy if the sanitary district is under a different, um, principle, but the, the policy is that at nine thirty, you take a vote to extend to ten and then ten o'clock, you can extend to ten thirty by unanimous vote only. And I believe that is the cutoff.
Yeah, I didn't see that.
It just has to be unanimous.
Or for each half hour.
Yeah.
Yeah. Apologize.
Yeah.
However, yes.
Yeah, so moving, moving quickly. Let's consider this second reading, please.
So I'll go ahead and take the vote, council member Casissa, council member Avasio.
Yes.
Council member Thomas.
Yes.
Vice mayor Beckman.
Yes.
And Mayor Lee.
Yes.
Thank you, the motion carries.
All right, let's go. Okay.
Okay.
All right. Well, thank you. So this is the second reading of the, um, of the resolution, which was introduced on June sixth. Um, this, uh, staff, I mean, this item would create the job classification of assistant town manager. Um, it would uh, create the job description and establish the same, the salary range of twelve thousand four hundred fifty-four dollars to fifteen thousand one hundred thirty-seven dollars, which is the same as the existing salary range for the town clerk slash assistant town manager, um, uh, job title currently. Um, so essentially this is a, um, request to, um, create this new position without the town clerk attached to it. So you just have this, the separate assistant town manager, uh, classification and then allows, as I discussed last time, allows for internal promotion of our current, um, admin analyst into the town clerk assistant to the town manager job title. Um, so with that, I will just stop there and ask, see if there are any questions of the council on this. Um, items. Thank you, Adam. Any questions? Nope. Okay, uh, so I'll close that, open it up to the public. Any questions? Any comments? Anybody online?
We have one person online, no hands raised, and I did not see any new email public comment.
All right, uh, so then I'll close public comment and bring it back for any final statements or a motion.
I'm gonna make the motion, approve, approve, uh, uh, resolution number thirty-six slash two, uh, third, uh, twenty-three, putting assistant town measure, classification, uh, job description and salary range.
Second.
Council member Casissa.
Yes.
Council member Avasio.
Yes.
Council member Thomas.
Yes.
Vice mayor Beckman.
Yes.
Mayor Lee.
Yes.
Thank you, the motion carries.
And so with that, we'll close the business items and we'll move on to number seven, council reports. Adam, do you have any council report? Or I'm not, I, I do not at this time. No. Okay. All right, uh, looking to the council, is there any council reports?
I do not.
Okay.
Just real quick, I attended MCE as the alternate for Eli and it was interesting, but there was a kind of bomb dropped when one of the board members announced that she did not think the board was any longer capable of negotiating in the complex energy market. And so they're talking about bringing in professional board members. And I don't know whether that means we'll get bumped, but hmm. I think that they
Public agency.
It would, yeah, it's a public agency and there's now thirty-seven municipalities. So it's an unwieldy board. It's probably, probably gonna have some changes, but enough of that.
Uh, yeah, I mean, if the, if there is any impact at the state, at, at the town level that, that we should be aware of, just to report back from staff would also be helpful on that, and if, if necessary.
Uh, for me, I attended, uh, MW, um, PA, I'm getting punchy, MW, MWPA, the only thing there is we approve this, uh, strategic plan for the upcoming, uh, year.
I attended Germany and France.
They're fine.
I've done my manager, my, my man, my town council, uh, duties and have nothing of, of import to share, so. Um, so with that, we'll close the reports and, um, open up the discussion of draft agenda for upcoming town council meetings. Anyone?
Good.
Right.
Okay, so with that, I'll close that and have adjournment. Okay. Like to bring to order the sanitary district number two, a subsidiary district of the town of Cormodera, regular meeting for Tuesday, June twentieth, twenty twenty-three at ten oh five PM. Attendance.
District board member Casissa.
Your
Board member Avasio.
Here.
Board member Thomas.
Here.
Vice president Beckman.
Here.
President Lee.
Here, uh, number two, open time for public comment, uh, any member of the public may address the district board concerning, I am not on the board agenda. Uh, seeing none in the room, is there anyone online?
We have no one online and no email public comments.
So with that, I'll close public comment. Moving on to number three, presentation, seeing none, we'll move on to number four, which is the consent calendar, the purpose of the consent calendars to group items together, which are routine or have been discussed previously and do not require further discussion. They will be approved by a single motion. Any member of the district board staff, uh, public or, or, or council can, uh, pull the item. Is there anyone on the dice that would like to pull an item? Anyone in staff? Anyone in the public? Seeing none or online?
No, um, no one online and no email public comment.
All right, so I'd be looking for a motion.
So moved. Approve, uh, the consent calendar for A and for B.
Okay, uh, call for vote.
I'm sorry, who made the motion?
Pat.
Okay, and the second?
Pete.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Um, board member Casissa.
Yes.
Board member Avasio.
Yes.
Board member Thomas.
Yes.
Vice President Beckman.
Yes.
President Lee.
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries.
So with that, we'll move on to number five. This is public hearings, five A, review the proposed sanitary district number two, operating budget for fiscal year twenty-two thousand three twenty-two thousand four and provide direction to staff as appropriate. This is a two meeting item.
President Lee and uh, board members, I'm gonna share screen and just share the staff report. Um, so we have it here for reference. And um, I think a big part of this be answering any questions, but um, fifty-nine percent of sanitary district two's revenue comes from property tax. Uh, thirty-eight percent of it, thirty-eight percent of it is from sewer district charges, which I believe are the lowest in the county at four hundred ninety-eight dollars per year. Uh, and have not changed since two thousand nine and, or two thousand ten. Um, we're in the process of gearing up for a rate study, so that's coming um, in the coming months and have said that before, but um, it's, it's been some complicated work, but we are actively meeting with Raph Telus, who is um, gonna be leading that, that discussion for the town amongst our master plan consultant GHD. Um, some highlights on kind of what's been going on year to year on the budget. Um, so going into expenditures, um, we're seeing, we're proposing a decrease by about a hundred nineteen thousand dollars um, for grant loan programs, and that's mainly because um, we had the next year rehab project was intended for Marandera Gardens and we pushed that by a summer. Originally, we were pushing, proposing to have that this year. Um, but due to other uh, cash flow and, and just investment um, needs, we're um, deferring that a year and thus we won't have as many private sewer laterals that are getting upgraded, and thus not the need for as many grant funds to match some of those upgrades. Um, so that's just a little explanation on that one. Um, and then just I guess going into this table a little bit, um, you'll see our unrestricted um, position has um, been lowering. And so, you know, when I started here two thousand eighteen, you know, it was up in the ten, twelve million dollar mark and it was really a charge to you know, build projects, um, address, you know, what were some pretty um, high risk infrastructure areas. And so we've been doing that as a, as a staff and, and I'm really proud of the work we've done, but we're now at a point that, that we don't have those um, you know, uh, reserve funds um, that we have had for the last five or so years on the sideline, and that's really what's going to help with this rate study to kind of understand what do we really need to um, have in terms of fees to really keep this agency responsible at you know, making sure the effluent gets to the treatment plant and then the treatment plant gets it cleaned up before it reaches the bay. So um, that'll be a whole nother discussion for another day. Um, but um, definitely an important one coming forth very soon. Um, we still have a steady stream of projects and I'm happy to get into any of these. Um, this is shown here. We go to the next page. Um, actually getting the program. So as mentioned, um, because we don't have that large scale sewer rehab project, we have one, which is kind of that capacity increasing project that, that's on Meadow Suite. It's continuation. I think this is um, phase three, and it's now going to take that main trunk sewer all the way up to um, Chapman or Willow. And so there will be some lower laterals associated with that work, but not to the extent that it would be if it was a huge, large scale neighborhood. So these items here at the bottom um, for PSL program um, have been reduced to account for that, and some of that money has been reprogrammed into projects. Uh, we've had some increases in our debt service, which is um, just really tied to a lot of the work that's going on at CMSA. We have upped our maintenance program um, internally and also um, maintaining also through consult, through contractors, and that's kind of work that has come up through our master pro, master plan process, just kind of doing a holistic view of our overall infrastructure and identifying areas that um, need more attention. So that's going to be um, something we're going to see in our maintenance budget um, for the, you know, foreseeable future as well. Um, and then getting into projects on the next page. Slide down here. So some of these are carryover, um, projects that are getting wrapped up. Others are um, offshoots from the master plan. There are a number of um, structural category five pipes, which is the worst category out of all of them that were rated five because they either have large sags or infiltration or other operation maintenance issues. And so those require further analysis and potentially modeling. So that's what one of these categories here is for, to do some more design work on that. Um, as mentioned, we've got the Meadow Suite trunk sewer rehab, which is the large product going that um, is under contract now. Um, and then we're gearing up for um, this says cat, it's category five pipe rehab. This is really to um, make some headway on our commitments for the Riverwatch settlement. Um, we're committed to doing five million dollars in structural category five pipes over the next five years. And so this project is going to target those specific pipes, and it's going to be a little bit of scattered throughout the town as opposed to our other strategy, which is to go into um, neighborhoods and get, you know, as much as we can within that area and then also time it and queue it up with a complete streets road project for the town. Um, but so a lot of these are going to be um, either segment here, segment there, or also these easements, which are very challenging. Um, the back five feet of someone's home, then they don't even realize it's there, but it's you know, it's deteriorating and it needs work, so um. And then otherwise, just um, we've started a smoke testing program. Um, we've done two successfully, one of the green brae boardwalk, which historically has been done. Um, they use smoke to identify areas where infiltration is occurring. Um, we also did grove and we're doing, doing several others, but it's a way of really just um, keeping a tight seal on I and I. And it's just another strategy that um, our team internally has, has um, gained the expertise. And um, obviously planning to wrap up the entirety of the um, sewer master plan this year. We just had some required updates at the state level for the sewer management plan, which is slightly different. Um, just it's over our overall um, plan showing our responsibility as an agency to have a reliable operating plan and also a um, and also includes a um, emergency overflow, overflow response plan. Um, and without that's it. And I will, at that point, open it up for questions.
Last quote boundary correction, what, are we gaining or losing uh, land?
Um, so there, so staff, current staff is, is very diligent. Um, over the course of last several years, we have found many historical incorrections or inaccurate boundaries um, where you know, someone's been getting free service and others have been paying when they shouldn't have. And so really that is, we have a dozen or so that need to be corrected. And it's a pretty um, time consuming tedious process. Um, and one that is getting cleaned up, for instance, is actually Redwood High School, one of the parcels there um, amongst um, several residences. Yeah.
Expanding.
Um, but otherwise, I'm happy to answer any questions. Um, I know it's a lot of numbers to, to look at, but um, I'll open it up to the floor.
Just one quick question, depreciation is up uh, six hundred thousand? And that's not a cash outlay, correct? That's just an accounting function?
That's correct, and I actually had to reach out to Daria. So she gave me a, a response here for that, so um, so uh, depreciated is estimated to increase in the current year as compared to last year, because when projects are not completed as of the end of the fiscal year, they are considered construction project in progress and are not depreciated. So I guess um, if it was complete, we would have a um, standard depreciation that we would be um, putting on that asset, but because it's not done, we can't apply that asset.
Okay, but again, there's no cash outlay on that line item.
Correct, correct.
Okay, thanks.
Anyone else? Okay, see, seeing none, uh, is there anyone online? As there's no one else here?
We don't have anyone online and we don't have any email public comment.
All right, so I'll close public comment. I'll bring it back for any final guidance or comments to staff.
I'll move, we pass it.
Okay, seeing no comments, can we get a motion? Or are you looking for a motion or just?
It'd be to introduce.
Okay.
Okay.
It was introduced. And it said, do we introduce it as a motion formally, or do we just kind of, like, since there's no direction, you can kind of just move it forward?
Sorry, my mistake. Um, you just provide direction. We don't need an official motion for this as we didn't do that for the town council at the last meeting.
All right. So you've received your feedback and okay.
July eighteenth.
All right, so with that, I'll close item number five, uh, item number six, no business items. Item number seven, is there any district manager reports? No, any board member reports? Anyone like to discuss the draft agenda? Okay, then, meeting adjourned.